Good evening, and we are calling to order the special meeting, the second meeting of the month of the Fairfax Town Council. And this is the 21st of April 2021. Michelle, would you take a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Goddard.
Here.
Councilmember Cutrano.
Here.
Councilmember Kohler.
Here.
Vice Mayor Helman.
Here.
And Mayor Ackerman.
Excuse me, I'm here, I believe. Okay. If we can look at the agenda and possibly have a motion for approval and affidavit of posting.
I'm to approve.
And I'll second.
Okay. Michelle, would you like to take a roll call on that vote, please?
Be happy to, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Goddard.
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrano.
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Helman.
Yes.
And Mayor Ackerman.
Yes.
All ayes, thank you.
Okay, and if Stephanie, if you would like to read the land acknowledgement tonight.
Sure, thank you. The Fairfax Town Council acknowledges that we are on the unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Mewa people of present day Marin County. We honor with gratitude the land itself and all of its ancestors, past, present, and emerging.
Thanks. Okay, and so briefly, the meeting protocol. The mayor will maintain order at the meeting. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and or ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain standards of tolerance and civility. We'll review the agenda at 10:00 PM and to see whether any items might be continued to another meeting. And any matter not started by 11:30 PM will be continued unless the council votes to suspend this roll. So we can begin with the consent calendar, which only has one item on it. If there's a I guess we see whether there's any council comments on that, and then we can go to public comment on the consent calendar. Renee, did you have, were you raising your hand? You're muted.
I was gonna let Councilmember Kohler go because her hand was up prior to mine, and then I will.
I think you should go first.
Okay, I'll go first.
Thank you.
You know what my comment is, is just a comment of expressing my gratitude to Ray Moritz. Not only has he prepared for us a fabulous plan, a sustainable plan, a plan that's been well, well, you know, long overdue is what I mean to say, and it's thorough. I think it's something that's actually actionable and that we can all wrap our heads around, not only that, but he has been in the park every Sunday, except for Easter, with a small group of us who have come out, including Councilmember Cutrano and Vice Mayor Helman, Geo Taylor, Jesse, forgot his last name from the volunteer board, and if I've forgotten anyone else, but every Sunday for hours, even after a surgery that he had on his arm, working in those redwoods because of his love for the trees, for the town, and his trust that we can all work together to do, to do right to steward our redwood trees. So I just, he needs to understand the gratitude that this, this town, or I could speak for myself, and I hope this council has for him and his fine work in great spirit. So thank you, Ray.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so my, thank you, Renee. I would also like to express my gratitude into town staff for getting this in a forum, working with Ray, so that I think we can move forward and have a nice plan in place. I had provided a few comments to staff beforehand, and one was about replanting the trees. Now, I know we agreed based on the last meeting and talking to Larry Bragman and others at Marin Water that we wouldn't plant new trees, the 15 trees this year. And I did ask staff, I think it would be a good idea to sort of have that where we think those trees will go, and also when we hope to plant them, should the drought abate next year, so that we're kind of ready to go. And I know staff got back to me saying, we don't know if the drought's going to continue. But I think one of our goals in trying to get this plan together was that we have something in hand that we can just access and use as we go forward. So I really would like us to have kind of a draft of where the trees will go, especially because I know Park is looking at putting some exercise equipment potentially in the park, and I don't want to take up the space that we want to put the trees in, and just sort of have it ready to go, and what would be the timeframe if, if we're out of drought next year? So we're just, you know, we can just move shovel ready. So that would be my request, that we just got something like that, and where those trees would be planted, and a rough schedule for 2022 if the drought abates. And I think we can always have that caveat that if we're still in drought, we won't plant. But we did make that commitment, thank you.
Okay. Stephanie.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Goddard. I couldn't agree more, and I'm so grateful to Ray, and, and I think this plan is so thorough. Really appreciate the images because, you know, you can recognize exactly where these specific trees being discussed are. And one question I had, though, is about the cost. I didn't see a total cost for all of these maintenance items. And so if we were to approve this in the absence of costs, it feels a little uncomfortable.
Garrett is not on.
Well, can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, there we go, yes, we can.
My laptop, well, now loaded up, basically it blew up. So I don't have a camera, and I don't know if you can hear me, because the camera for my computer is at the timer. So that makes it that more difficult to work, but I can look at my camera. But if you just give me two minutes, then I think my laptop's gonna work. I can come back on and answer all those questions.
Okay, that works for me. I'll just add to Councilmember Kohler's suggestion to have a plan for those additional trees, I think makes sense. I understand there will be a discussion about potentially expanding Perry Park to make room for the Spider Jungle Gym, which is not fitting. So that's relevant to this discussion, too. So thank you for raising that. So I think we wait for Garrett to get back on.
I think one note that there is a fiscal impact of $3,500 on that report, and that's for purchasing that
Yeah.
shipping thing. I don't know if there's more cost than that, but.
Well, like everything on page 11, for example.
Yeah, like compost and things can, those can add up unless we're getting those, we're assuming we're getting those for free from Marin Sanitary or something as part of our.
Yeah, and I think last time Ray advised, even though it isn't here about compost, he advised against buying compost because it's so expensive and talked about other methods. So it would be good to hear from Garrett on that.
And I, and I think part of the rationale for the particular type of mulching and chipping equipment that he wanted was that it could potentially accomplish that as well, if I'm not mistaken, but.
That was my assumption. Perhaps we should go to public comment on this, on this item, and then by that time, maybe Garrett will be back to answer some questions.
Okay.
Okay, Michelle, if you can check and see whether we have public comment on this.
I'd be happy to, Mr. Mayor. At the moment, there are no hands raised, but it kind of came up quickly. So maybe we just give people a moment to raise their hands if they have a comment on this one consent item. And there is one hand raised, two. So the first hand raised is a telephone caller. There's only one, so you know who you are. I won't read your number out loud, and after that comes Mark Bell. So I have unmuted the phone caller. You may have to unmute your phone yourself.
Yes, Frank Eggers speaking.
Oh.
At, at the first meeting, I spent a half an hour trying to speak to that issue, and it refused to let me in. It kept saying I'm using the wrong ID number. I took the ID number right off of the website. Then I tried calling, and it refused to let me in. This time I got in for the second meeting. So I had a prepared statement for, for, for the first meeting, and I'm not sure what to do about that now. I was speaking for say Fairfax, and, and it would not let me in. I don't know how many other people were not allowed to speak tonight, but did you have any idea?
Well, we had a fair number of speakers, so I didn't hear anything else about people not being able to get in.
Yeah, well.
We had limited to a small number, a small amount of time because there were so, there were many commenters, and it was a pretty short meeting. But it wasn't a meeting in which any action items, any action was taken.
No, I realized that. But I spent three days researching for tonight's meeting and, and not allowed to speak. I had, I had the speech down to the appropriate number of minutes, and, you know, I was unable to speak. I guess I should wait for the next meeting, when you're going to be dealing with this issue.
Maybe you can also send it in to us, Frank, by email.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, if I send it in by, will it go into the public record?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll do that, thank you. On tonight's, I'd like to speak on this issue.
Okay.
The, the, the giant sequoia that's in the little park in the Cascades, interest of Cascades, that's, they call it Doc Edgar Park, no relation to me. It's, it's a heritage tree, it's huge, and it's really in trouble. It's, and, and Ray has said it's called Botryspheria, and, and it's, it's a disease, I guess, that, that giant sequoias get in, in, in low, low elevation areas. But it's looking really bad. It's tech, it's tag number 2599, and I don't know if it needs water or what, but I took a photograph of it today. That tree is really browning out, and it would be a shame to lose that tree. So there must be something we can do about it. Should, should neighbors start bringing over gallons of water and dumping it on the tree, or what? I mean, is, is Ray on the meeting tonight?
No, he's not, not that I've seen.
If I may, Ray, Ray has mentioned that it could potentially be overwatered. So please do not go and put water or water that tree. We'll, Garrett, if you would check in on that tree, please.
I mean, has anyone gone out and looked at it? It is brown. I mean, it, it looks like it's on its way out. It's very dry all around it, so.
Yeah, well, we should definitely have Ray look at that and give us advice on it, because he certainly is.
Okay, though.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank. Good evening.
Okay. Um, Mr. Mayor, this is the town clerk. I just wanted to say that if a member of the public ever has trouble getting into the Zoom meeting to speak or to, to raise their hand or anything like Mr. Egger just spoke of, you can always email me, but can always email me at mgardner@townoffairfax.org and just put in the subject line, you know, Zoom problem or something, because I will answer, I can't read my email all through the meeting, obviously, but I will help people with technological problems.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm sorry that happened.
Yes.
So the next speaker is Mark Bell. You're unmuted now, Mark.
Thank you. I just find it really odd that you want, you, you're having public comment without having the public be, being able to hear the comments and the reports that are going on, and then you're going to consider that the public comment is done. So I don't understand why you're going to public comment. Why? It makes no sense to me. So I think really you need to open up public comment after all the information is presented that we're waiting for. Otherwise, it's a moot thing, and it's just really a facade. That's all I have to say.
Okay. We were waiting for Garrett to answer the question that was raised, and that was the only question that had been raised at that point. Garrett, so you're back on. Michelle, do we have any other people waiting for public comment at this point?
No, we do not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let's go back to hear Garrett answering the question.
Okay, I do apologize for the technical difficulties. For whatever reasons, the laptop decided it was going to blow up tonight. Answer questions, redwood trees. So redwood trees, the location has, is not near Perry Park by the playground, it's on the other side by the women's club. Ray has identified a location for the 15 trees. We're unhappy to share that with you. The other, the other thing is in terms of the watering and planting, the reason it depends on drought is just obviously because we'll have to water the trees. Otherwise, what would happen is, I believe it's in the spring is when we would plant trees. I think that, I think that's what the ideal location is, if not planting them in the fall. Obviously, I can clarify that with, with Ray. In terms of cost, that cost number $3,500 is related to the trailer, the mulcher, sprinkler heads, tax, delivery. In terms of some of the other costs, in terms of mulch and compost, I don't think we're going to do compost, but we're going to work with Ray, figure out what's the best way to do all this. Like, obviously, for some mulch, we did the broadcast chipping of the trees. There are some more trees that are with red tagged that do need to come out. So it'd be more broadcast shipping. So we're kind of working as we go on this. It'd be exorbitant within the budget. I think my direction is we need to at least create that baseline to get things going. I don't, you know, it can all be absorbed within our budget. I don't think it's going to be a crazy number where I'll need to come back to the council, unless you're telling me there's some threshold. So like, if this all costs $20,000, which I'm not saying it will, but I don't think that's unreasonable. If we had to bring in lots of different things, does that require a check in with the council? Or is it, no, we need to do what we need to do to set that baseline for the trees. Then we'll have a better idea for next year, what needs to be done. Part of the strategy is, once we implement things, then next year, working with the Arborists, we'll be able to see, do we need to do more of this stuff? Or what we did is fine, at least for that one year. We just need to add a little bit, and that would be built into the budget. So that's our, that's our strategy going forward.
Okay. And I don't know if you heard while you were getting back online, the, the comment about the giant sequoia in Doc Edgar Park?
Yeah, Ray has looked at that, so I'll just ask him to look again, and then we'll do whatever he, he recommends.
Okay.
With the exception, obviously, hopefully a tree can be saved. But if it can't, obviously, we'll let, we would let you know and the tree committee know. But we'll work what we can to save the tree.
Yeah. Okay. Stephanie and then Barbara.
So, thank you, Garrett. So I'm, I'm, and now I'm a little confused, because so if we approve this plan, this is what the town is committing to, but then I just heard that we're not going to do compost, which is part of the plan. So sorry to get very nitty gritty on you, but I'm just trying to really understand if, if we approve it, which I hope we do. I just really want to understand what, what we're going to do.
Right.
Is it all of those items on page 11? And the is it everything in here except for the compost?
I don't know, was Councilmember Cutrano going to comment, or you just had another question?
I was going to comment on that. I was just going to direct Vice Mayor Helman to that last paragraph, or the last sentence or two in the compost section. And so the particular type of compost that Ray Moritz was referring to are tree trips, tree chips and leaf matter as, as compost, which is, is part of that machinery that we'll be purchasing. So we'll be able to use leaf litter and dead material from our immediate Perry Park redwood trees in order to be a part of that, that type of composting, I think. I don't think we're going to be purchasing, like, you know, manure compost as part of this or something like that.
That was my understanding as well, basically like in a natural redwood forest, where it's, there's compost, and there's also a layer on top of the, of the earth of that compost.
Got it.
Observing that in the.
I appreciate the clarity on that, and I guess I have no further questions, thank you.
Barbara.
Yeah, just something that you mentioned, Garrett, was that some trees are red tagged, and they're going to come out. Are we going to the tree committee, please, with these?
Actually, we've talked to them about it, so we'll probably end up talking to them again.
Let's play.
Because we, because we've, we've actually talked, Grace actually talked to them quite a bit, I think. But we'll talk to them. Again, I don't believe any of those that have it are in imminent danger of failure, because I think we've addressed those, but hopefully I, I'm not incorrect on that.
And how many are there?
That still have a red ribbon on it?
Yeah.
Off the top of my head, I'd say five. Maybe it's not that many.
Is that five in addition to the 14 we already took out, or is that within those 14?
It's within the 14. We didn't, we didn't take out all those trees. We just took out the ones that were clearly dead or really a hazard where we just had to address it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Yeah, Chance.
One, I just didn't know if we formally closed public comment. When Garrett came back, was just a process question, but I did have a, an actual comment as well related to the cost question that Vice Mayor Helman brought up. So I can, I can bring that up if that, is this the right time? Okay, great. So the other thing about costs that I just wanted to note is, after we initially discussed this with Ray at that fantastic council meeting, and then the story ran in the IJ, I did speak with Todd Steiner, who runs Turtle Island Restoration Network Spawn in the San Geronimo Valley, and he reached out offering to donate the, the 15, 15 gallon trees to, to support our efforts to regenerate the redwoods as well. So that might keep costs down. It hasn't been fully worked out, but I just wanted to give credit to Spawn for reaching out and, and being willing to donate those redwood trees as well.
Thank you. Okay, so with regard to the public comment, I don't see any other hands up, but I will try again, just because we hadn't finished the questions. Usually, we ask questions first, then we go to public comment, but we hadn't really gotten the answers to the questions due to the technical problem. So Michelle, are you seeing any other public comment at this point on this item?
I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay. All right, so public comment is definitely closed, and I would entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar, which is this one item of accepting the Arborist report and proceeding with it as a tree plan.
I'll, I'll move to accept the final redwood tree maintenance plan from the town arborist.
A second.
Hey, thank you. Michelle, would you take a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Goddard.
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler.
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Helman.
Yes.
And Mayor Ackerman.
Yes.
All ayes, motion passes.
All right. Thanks again to Ray Moritz for that. I certainly learned a lot from all this process. Okay, so on to the regular agenda, on which we have three items. So the first one is the, well, I'll let Garrett begin with the staff's report on item number two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item two is actually conduct a random drawing of names from the qualified applicant pool for at-large community members, business community rep, and ratify and appoint members to serve on the community interview panel for the police chief recruitment process, and if desired, appoint a council subcommittee to debrief the community panel. So as background, you may recall, back at your March 17th meeting, the council determined to conduct a internal recruitment process for the next police chief. As part of that process, the council indicated like to form a community panel to interview the candidate for police chief. That panel would consist of seven members, one volunteer board member, one racial equity and social justice committee member, one police practices and public safety alternative subcommittee of the RESJ, one chamber rep, one business rep, and two at-large members. And the process we followed is basically the process we did when we created a similar panel for the planning and building services director. So today, I think we've received 10 applications, and what we would do is we would conduct a random draw here virtually, so everyone could see what's going on. And what we would do is we would select two primary members and two alternate members in the event those primary members or one of them can't attend the actual scheduled interview date. We do the same thing for the business representatives, which I believe there are five interest parties. And then what we would do after we do that, then we would, we would go ahead and go through, tell you that there's other four members on the panel. The volunteer board has selected Sam Silverstein as their rep. The RESJ, PBSA has selected Alexandra Rosen and Sophia Martin as their primary, and they've selected Tai Yu, the goalie, I think I just butchered her last name, Veronica Garetz, as the alternates, and the chamber commerce representative is Kaz Bagley. So once we do the drawings, you'll have those representatives and their alternates. Then you have these that have been chosen by the respective bodies. Then the council action would be to appoint the at-large business reps and just ratify the appointment of the other reps. And so that's what we're looking to do this evening. One correction, the staff reported, pointed, they pointed out some dates. Turns out, in talking to the police chief because of shifts and vacation and leaves, the best week to conduct the interview is, is probably the week of May 24th. So that's the week now we're looking to conduct a community panel interviews. Be sometime during May 24th. And once we know who's on the panel, then we'll do a doodle poll to see which time and date works best for everybody. And obviously, if the council members have a subcommittee, we'd also have to make sure that date works for the council members, because they would debrief the panel after they're done. So with that, that's the staff report. If there's any questions available to answer it, otherwise, I'll turn it over to Michelle to go through the random drawing process.
Thank you. Any questions on this process, or? Yeah, Renee?
I'm, I'm just curious, Mayor and Garrett, how you would like to go about the appointment process of the two council members? As I would like to put my name forward.
I, I would recommend you do it after you do the random drawing. Oh, before that, though, because we just described it, I don't know if you want to get, take your public comment now on this, as opposed to drawing the names and then taking public comment. It's really council preference.
Okay, if there are any other questions, and then we can go to public comment. Okay, Michelle, you're probably preparing for the drawing, but.
Yes, I'm preparing for the drawing. No, I don't see any hands raised, actually. If anyone wants to comment on this item, raise your hand, please.
Not seeing any.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll bring it back, and Michelle, whenever you're ready, we can do the drawing.
Okay, I'm going to be on camera for this, so it's all very transparent. So first of all, I have a question for you all, and that is the, the applications we received 10, as it says in the staff report. Four of the applicants did not get their recommendations in. We had asked in the process that they submit their name and their. We had asked in the process that they submit their name and their interest in serving and also to get a local resident or business owner to submit a letter just recommending them. So I don't know if you would like me to still include all 10 names in the pool or to hold back on the four who didn't get their recommendations and go ahead with the six names. It's up to the council.
Any thoughts on that, council members? I would assume we would get the recommendation, ask for the recommendation if the person's name was drawn, but it would be after the drawing.
Was it was it specified on the application that they were required to submit a recommendation?
It was specified. It wasn't listed as a hard and fast requirement and it wasn't necessarily highly visible, although I did send out an email reminding people about it. So it's a little bit.
Yeah.
But you did remind people, correct?
That is correct.
And I don't think it was required that anybody submit a lengthy recommendation letter. It was a fairly simple process. I think my only concern is you know, I've all the names look like people who are, you know, very talented and would add a lot to the process. My concern is that there is going to be a process and it would be good if people can follow the rules. So it's a little bit of concern that people didn't submit at least one letter of recommendation when I know so many do.
Do we want to just take a vote? I think.
On this item, yeah. Let's go ahead with that. We'll take a vote among the council members here on the question, should we include or should we not include the people who submitted their application? Which I guess there are four of them out of the 10 total who did not submit a letter of recommendation from another resident. So include or not include those four before we do the random drawing. Michelle, would you like to take the roll call?
If you just, if you would like to include all 10 names, would you just raise your hand? So I see one. And that's Vice Mayor Hellman. Okay, and if you think that the four names should be held out of the pool of applicants for the random drawing, would you please raise your hand? I see one, two, three, four.
Okay.
And that's everybody else. Formal vote. So it looks like I should remove those names.
Okay, yes.
And so I will do that now.
So you don't have to list those names, but I'm sure as a part of this process, you'll be going through the names that are that remain.
Yes, so they're listed in your staff report and those four were the bottom four names in the staff report. For a reason. So we are now down to six six applicants in the pool. I will, I have their names and I have an empty can. And I am going to read each name and then fold it and place it in the can. I will cover it, shake it up, and then I will draw a name for each position. Four positions, two primary, two alternates.
Um, Michelle?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm just looking at something that you sent me. Are you sure there wasn't a recommendation for Doug Cooper?
There is, there was a recommendation for Doug Cooper. Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe I I need to look at my staff report. Oh, yeah, Doug Cooper is not included. Sorry. I will tell you the people for whom there is no recommendation. It's Keith Silva, Don Carney, Edmund J. Avis, and Andrew Marshall. We did not get letters for them.
Okay.
So you're right, Douglas Cooper is the fourth, not, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, so the first name is, I don't know how transparent you want me to be there. It says Ted Pugh. And I'm folding it in half and in half again, placing it in the can. Okay, the next name is Patrice Bryan. It's backwards, huh?
Oh.
In half and half again. They're all the same size. I like fairness and transparency. This says Nancy Rogers backwards. And I am, I should show you, I'm folding it in half. Again, placing it in the can. Now we have three. Next is Mallory Geitheim. Folding it in half and half again in the can. Jane Richardson Mack. Folding. And in final is Doug Cooper. Okay. And now here's the can, the last one. Getting a lid on the can. I'm shaking the can. I'm being laughed at. Now, an anonymous person off the street is going to put their hand in the can and select the first primary member, just one. Okay, closing.
That's one.
It's one, yeah. Okay, and the first primary member is Patrice Bryan.
Okay.
More, the hand. This one. Yes. Okay, the second primary member is Nancy Rogers. Now we are going to do stuff, the alternate, first alternate. Okay, first alternate, Douglas Cooper.
Okay.
Uh, second alternate. Second alternate is Jane Richardson Mack. So that is, those are your at-large members now. For the business, I'm going to remove the other two. Now my can is empty again. For the business applicants, we had five. The deadline went to Monday morning, so we had one extra addition, not extra, but an additional. Mark Squire from Good Earth Natural Foods Store added his name to the to the mix. So the first name is Paul Fradelizio of Fradelizio Restaurant. I'm going to fold him in half and quarters. Place him in the can. Augie Venetia from Fairfax Lumber. The second applicant. Michael McIntosh from Marin Town and Country Club. And Brenna Gubbins from Live Water Surf Shop. Folded. Boss and Mark Squire from Good Earth Natural Foods.
Right.
All right, the can is now full. All right, so this is for the primary member, business representative. One. Yes, and it is Augie Venetia from Fairfax Lumber. And then for the second, I mean, for the alternate. It is Mark Squire, Good Earth Natural Foods. Thank you very much, Assistant. So I will turn it over to Garrett now. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome.
Garrett, was there something you were going to say at this point? Michelle said to turn it over to you. Oh, you're muted.
Keep on doing that. I apologize. Uh, now that you have that, then now if you wanted to talk about the council's desire for a subcommittee, you can you can do that. And then what we would take afterwards is a motion to appoint, ratify the members as you saw for the at-large and business, ratify the members as it's shown in the staff report. And then you could have a motion to appoint your two subcommittee members.
So let's take the first question first. Do we all agree that we would like to have a council subcommittee of two members? I'm seeing. Yes.
To add to the.
To add, well, the council subcommittee, my understanding is this council subcommittee would not be on the interview committee, but it would be on, it would, this council subcommittee would help to debrief the interview committee afterwards along with staff. Correct, Garrett? Yeah.
That's correct.
Prior to, you mean, brief, you mean prior to the?
No, after after the interviews, right?
A debrief, yes. So you would meet with the committee panel after it's conducted its interview for its feedback on the candidate.
I see.
What they learned from the interview, yeah. So.
But the council, just so I'm clear on process, the council is going to have an opportunity.
The council will have a separate interview with the candidate.
Right, okay.
So I'm gathering that we're all agreed that we also would like to have the subcommittee of two to, along with staff, debrief the community interview panel. Is that correct? And then we can address who would be on that. Okay. All right, so as to who would be on that, Renee earlier put her name forward. Barbara?
I'd like to put my name forward.
Okay.
I would also like to put my name forward.
Okay. I was thinking of doing the same thing, but I will not since we already have three. Okay, now we need to figure out two out of the three people who have put their name forward.
Break out the can. No, I'm just kidding.
We could. You can do any process you'd like.
Why don't we do the can?
Well, actually, I can, you know, if you like, I can make this easy, easy for us all. I I'm I'm okay if you two want want to do it. Yeah, I I really am. It doesn't need to be the can. I'm sure that each of us could do an excellent job. Community members that have all stepped forward to do this. So since the council will get our opportunity to ask the questions that we want to, then I'm very okay, actually honored to see this to you two.
Thanks for being very gracious and I'm looking for the forward to the opportunity to get to work with Councilmember Cutrano, which I haven't had the opportunity to do. So I think it will be a good opportunity and like you said, well, all the council will be interviewing the interim chief as well. So thank you for being so gracious as always, Renee.
All right. Stephanie, you're okay with it? You haven't put your name forward?
No, I'm good.
Okay, so it sounds like we've got a decision that council members Kohler and Cutrano will be the subcommittee of two council members for the debriefing of the community interview panel. And so thank you for that. And what we now need to do is to ratify the, to actually make the appointments of the people who were just drawn from the can as primaries and alternates and also the people who are in the staff report as being selected by the volunteer board, by the RESJ and by the PPPSA of RESJ. And that's volunteers, their primaries and alternates, and also a Chamber of Commerce member.
Mayor, should we go to public comment before we do that?
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, let's do that before we take that action. Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, this is Janet. May I also say that the council is going to be ratifying those elections that were made by other committees.
Right, right. That's what that's what we would do is ratify all of these appointments, including our own appointments. But we just. Okay, thank you. And we'll go to public comment now. Michelle, if you've got your can put away and ready to do the public comment for us? Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, it's in the can. Sorry, I had to say that. Anyone has a public comment, you can raise your hand now. I do not see any hands raised. If you're trying to raise your hand and you can't, please email me at mgardner@townoffairfax.org. Okay, no, no emails and no hands if you want to post the public comment.
We'll bring it back from public comment. And so do we have a motion to ratify these appointments? Do we need to? Someone who makes a motion should formalize what we're ratifying. Yes, Garrett?
My suggestion is you just look at recommendations three, four, and five, and you make a motion in that order. So then it'll be perfectly clear.
Yeah, okay.
I would be happy to make that motion. So I would move that we appoint the at-large business and alternate representatives to the interview panel, that we ratify the appointment of representatives from the RESJ and the PPPSA, volunteer board, and Chamber of Commerce to the community panel, and that we appoint Councilmember Cutrano and Councilmember Kohler to the two-member ad hoc subcommittee to debrief the community panel and report back to the full council. Uh-oh, what I forget?
Nothing, just to be clarified, on your item number three, when you're appointing, you're appointing those members as them as drawn, the names drawn by the town clerk.
Okay, yes. So to be clear, to appoint the at-large business and alternate representatives to the interview panel as drawn out of the can by town clerk Gardner.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second, a second. Oh, did Chance already do it? It was so quiet. I'm sorry.
We'll we'll take Chance's second. All right, thank you. And so, Michelle, that's a motion by Goddard, second by Cutrano. And if you would take the roll call, please.
I'd be happy to, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Goddard.
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrano.
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
And Mayor Ackerman.
And yes.
Unanimous, passes.
Okay, thank you all.
Mayor?
Yes.
Before we move on, could I ask the town manager about the survey that's out for the public? What's the closing date? I want to make sure to remind people to take that survey because it is your opportunity as the public to weigh in and to voice your questions and your and your comments about public safety in the town of Fairfax. So when what's the deadline, Garrett? Don't tell me it's past.
No, Monday, April 26.
Okay, excellent. So you have five more days. So please do take that survey. Your input is is really valuable.
Yeah. Good point. Thank you for bringing that up. Okay, thank you. And so if we can now move on to item three on the agenda and begin with a staff report, Garrett?
Yes, item three is consider requests from the Climate Action Committee, CAC, to adopt an all-electric requirement for new residential and commercial construction and provide direction to staff as appropriate. So you may recall back at your February 3 meeting, you considered requests from the CAC to require all new electric and new residential and commercial. At that meeting, we discussed two approaches. One was an ordinance and health and safety code. The other was building reach codes. What the council decided on February 3, after lengthy discussion, was that you actually requested the CAC conduct additional research and report back to the council with its recommended approach regarding an all-electric requirement, including any exceptions to the process. So the CAC has done that and attached the staff report as a white paper that kind of outlines their research and recommendations. But in essence, what they're recommending to the council is the council adopt an all-electric ordinance in the health and safety code. The ordinance would apply to all types of buildings to uses, so all new. The ordinance would apply to all types of buildings to uses, so all new residential, commercial. There'd be exemption for commercial kitchens. Or it would only apply to buildings, to new buildings. So we'll obviously have to come up with a definition of new, but staff could do that. And then no other energy requirements for buildings. And so how staff sees this process working, what we're looking is for some general policy direction from the council. Based on that, based on your direction, then we'd work with the town attorney to come up with the ordinance that we then bring back to the council for consideration. So our suggestion to this process is if you have questions of staff, then open up public comment. And then if council members, individual council members have adjustments or suggestions to consider for exemptions or revisions, we would say during the council deliberations, we would suggest that you go ahead and talk about those. But you don't necessarily decide on it at that moment. It's more questions about what that exemption would be and how it would work. Staff will keep the running lists. After council completes its discussions about what it would like to see possibly considered for changes, then what staff could do is we can come back to you at this meeting with your list, and then you take a straw poll vote on whether or not you think that's a good idea or not. So for example, if you want an exception, now, I'm not saying you are, but if you want an exception for some type of affordable housing, then now just go on the list. And then rather than try to deliberate and build consensus at that moment in time, you build your list, and then at the end, we'll come back as staff and say, okay, council members, one item was exempt affordable housing that was defined as X. Then as the council members, we'd ask you to take a straw poll, and if you have a majority of you on it, then that's something we would work with the town attorney to come back with, with an ordinance. One of the key things to think about is that this isn't the last step. When the ordinance comes back to the council, you'll have another opportunity to talk about those exemptions as well as the ordinance. And there is no rule that you don't make additional changes or change your mind on something that, that's the whole purpose of this, and it does happen, it does happen from time to time. So that's just suggested process in order to help you move, move forward in your discussions. We just, we don't want you to get stuck on, on one item, just kind of talk about it, move on, then hopefully with the list, you could just pick. And if there's at least three of you, then we'll move forward with that. And you'll have an upper opportunity whenever the ordinance comes back to you for approval. So that's a suggested process. That concludes the staff reports. Are available for any questions?
So if we have any questions at this point, we can get them answered, and then we can go to public comment and then begin our discussion. Barbara?
Just a question on when we should give the list. Should we do that before public comment? Or after, just so people have a chance to hear what our potential exemption list is? I know we usually just ask questions now, but I'm wondering about that. Garrett, you're on mute.
Actually, it's at the pleasure of the council. I, I thought you were addressing the question to the council.
Well, I'm asking maybe of the mayor, what makes sense? I mean, if I provide a list of exemptions, no que, really no questions because I've already asked those. Would that be a better way so that the public can hear those and potentially weigh in on those? What do you think, Mayor?
Well, I guess we could do it that way. I'm not sure whether all of us are prepared. I mean, once I hear your list, something might come up for me. And so we'll, we'll see how far we go. But yeah, let's, let's go ahead and put your list forth.
Okay, well.
If people can comment on it.
Okay, so I would suggest we keep this to low-rise residential. And to me, that would be less than three stories. And only new construction, which would mean not the 75% that the county uses for their electric preferred. I think we should also exempt new construction in the event of a disaster where somebody's going to rebuild. And then.
You think, I'm sorry, include or exclude that?
I'm, these are just exemptions.
Okay.
That I'm listing in the event of, for example, a flood and you have to rebuild. I, I don't think we want to. Anyway, that's my suggestion. Pools and spas. Some time ago, when we first took this up or kind of took this up, we got a letter from the pool and spa lobbying group that was saying that there, there is some concerns with being able to use just electric. And so I think we should consider some type of exemption. Not everyone can use solar. And, and usually need some sort of natural gas for something that actually works for a pool or spa. So just some sort of exemption, not a blanket exemption. I think we should also exempt ADUs and JADUs where they're adding to an existing building. And then there is a couple of questions I have that weren't really answered. So I'm not sure that we can answer those tonight, but the long-term cost of electric versus natural gas, I think building is cheaper. And I know CAC talked something about a carbon tax in the future, but that may or may not happen. And natural gas is considered carbon-free unless you look at extraction. So I'm just wondering, when you look at your utility bill, any of you that have natural gas, it is much cheaper than electric in the long term. Now, it may not be that way in the future. And then my other question that CAC sort of answered was what about PSPS events or longer power outs? Usually with battery backup, you only get 12 hours. And some of us remember the four days of PSPS or even the longer, just normal power outages. So and I do have a newish gas stove, and I'm not a cook, so I didn't, it was here, but I got a newer one. And I can light that stove, and there's no CO buildup. So there is something to be said for having that ability to be able to cook. So those are just a couple of questions, and that's my shortlist.
I, I had a quick question for you, though. When you mentioned ADUs and JADUs, what were you saying if they were attached or detached?
If you're adding it to an existing building, if it's a separate detached unit, which would really only be in an ADU, then I think that makes sense to include it as new construction, but where you're adding it to an existing building. If that building already has natural gas, I think that should be exempt.
That would kind of go to the definition, which Garrett mentioned, would be something that would come in writing the ordinance.
Remodel.
Find what new construction.
Well, that's why I, I was talking about actually purely new construction as my list. So thank you for your patience.
Renee?
Yeah, I just have one, and it's something that needs to be explored. So I, I've tried to do some research on the, the implication for affordable housing developers when it, when all-electric is, is, is the requirement. And I, I've seen both in the research that I've done. I can't claim that I know enough, but I would really like to, to see if we can get some more information before we move forward about any way that this would hinder our ability to attract a nonprofit developer that would be producing, you know, it would have to be, you know, do we, do we say 100% affordable housing? If, if it really shows up that they won't meet their margins, or that they won't qualify for the financing. Although on the flip side, I've heard that that is actually a way for them to qualify for financing. So I think that this is, this is a very positive thing and move, moving everyone in the right direction. And eventually the subsidies will be there for the affordable housing developers. But I just want to make sure that we've done our homework on that. So that's my, my question for potential exemption. With, you know, with stipulating certain criteria.
Yeah, okay. Any other thoughts, staffer, before we go to public comment, just so that the public can comment on those ideas?
Well, I, I mean, I have responses to council member Kohler's exemptions, but we can talk about that later.
Okay.
After public comment.
Yeah.
But I don't want that to be the direction that is perceived by the public, that what we're going to be necessarily.
No, I, I would have some comp and some responses to those.
Yeah.
Exemptions as well. That's just a list for this to discuss. Okay, so I'll go to public comment at this point, and we'll, we'll hear what the public knows about this issue, and then we'll come back and discuss it. If you can, Michelle, go to public comment with us.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. If anybody would like to comment on this item, now is the time to raise your hand. I see two hands. So first is Richard Applebaum, followed by E. Bond Francisco. So, Richard, you are unmuted.
I'm probably going to be in an unpopular position, but I oppose this ordinance in its entirety. I'm not entirely sold that going all-electric is, is for the betterment and improvement. There are downsides to electric. At a minimum, I support all council member Kohler's exemptions. And I would like to see at least some clarity that existing homeowners, if they do a remodel or whatever, that's not considered something new, and they're being compelled. So I know there's a lot of, a lot of climate activists in town, and there's a belief that electric is, is better for us. And but there's other issues with electric and EMF, and I don't, I don't like this being mandated. And I don't know that there's a broad majority support in this town for implementing this, even though I know there's a lot of passion for climate up there. So sorry for not being in the popular view. Maybe see me a little bit like a Luddite, but that's my position. Thank you.
You. The next speaker is, disappeared. So it is now Jody Timms. Oh, no, it is Mallory Geithheim, followed by Jody Timms. Mallory, you are unmuted. You might have to unmute yourself.
Okay, so if you, if you, I think when we're talking about affordable housing, I would really like if you guys would invite the Affordable Housing Committee to have some feedback during some, and have some meetings about it. And since I am on the committee, I would, I would really like to be included in when, whenever there is something about affordable housing for the town. The other thing is somebody mentioned before solar. I, there's many of us, especially in Fairfax, who just can't get solar at all because of where we live. And I've tried, and because I have enough shade or too much shade, I can't do that. So I don't know how that is going to work out with, with whatever you're talking about now with the electric. But we, some of us can't get solar panels. So that's, that's all I have to say. And, and I'm sorry I didn't get on the committee. The police. Okay.
Thank you, Mallory.
The next speaker is Jody Timms. And Jody, you are unmuted now.
Evening, council members. As a member of the Climate Action Committee, I just want to reiterate the importance of the climate crisis that we are in. I really don't think many people in the public are aware of the severity of the situation. Obviously, not in just the town of Fairfax, but in this country and across the planet. Climate science is very clear about the need for us to stop burning fossil fuels and to move to all-electric building and transportation. This is not just a California initiative. There are 40 municipalities in the state that are looking at this or have passed some version of it. But President Biden is pushing for much greater greenhouse gas reductions. We have got to go in this direction sooner or later. This type of ordinance is going to be necessary. And I just want to reiterate how important I think it is. I think looking at exemptions is a really good idea. And looking at costs because there's a lot of, I think, misinformation. There's not always, there's not always been as much research as I think a lot of us would like to see. But there are, there's, there is really a need for leadership on this, on this issue, both locally, nationally, and globally. We are, have heard the United Nations and many, many, many scientists and economists and others encouraging climate action as dramatically and as boldly as we can. We cannot keep kicking the problem, the can down the road. So I just want to reiterate how important this is for us to look at as soon as possible. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jody.
I do not see any more hands raised. If you want to close the public comment, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, we will do so. So back to council, and we can discuss exemptions or the ordinance itself. And we're giving direction to staff here. I will wait.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to kick it off, Mayor. So I generally am supportive of the Climate Action Committee's efforts. I, you know, two weeks ago, for the first time in human history, atmospheric carbon was above 420 parts per million. Like, there's an organization that Bill McKibben founded, 350.org, that was trying to keep it to 350 parts per million, and we are at 420 parts per million. And, and I, I really am concerned that, you know, we have one generation to, to figure this out. And, you know, the, the more carve-outs we make, the more difficult it'll be for us to achieve our, our climate action goals locally, regionally, nationally, globally. So every little bit helps, I think, in that regard. The other piece that I'm thinking about is if the state is planning to do this kind of thing through the Energy Commission 2022 or 2025 or something like that, we're talking about a lot of assets that are stranded, new investment in, in infrastructure that will be wasted. It's almost judicious or prudent to get ahead of this, knowing that this is coming. Not only because it's, it, it's the environmentally appropriate thing to do, but it's also the fiscally responsible thing to do, thinking long-term about where our state is headed. And, and the third thing that I think about with this is the fact that there are 12 million Californians that are living with gas appliances and the air quality in their homes, or their rental units, or their apartments, or their condos. The, the nitrous oxide and the, the gases in those living environments exceeds federal standards for 12 million Californians because of gas appliances. So there's actually an environmental health component, and that's predominantly borne by communities of color as well, and, and lower-income communities that, that don't have a choice. And yeah, I, I live with gas appliances, and I, I welcome, you know, the change. And I think we, we should be figuring out how to make the community more resilient while also, you know, reaching for something beyond fossil fuels. And I think there are new technologies that'll emerge over time as well. But I, I wanted to speak to council member Kohler's, you know, potential exemptions or exclusions. I, I'm definitely in favor of the, the attached unit exemption. I think that makes a lot of sense, for sure. If there's already infrastructure there, and it's already part of the, the unit or the structure, that makes a lot of sense. I, I am concerned about the, the exemption in case of a rebuild from a natural disaster. I, I think about, I mean, you know, let, knock on wood, that it would, it will never happen. But, you know, wildfires or certain, certain disasters, I'd hope that if something happened that a house would be rebuilt to the best standards and would be off of fossil fuels and wouldn't have to go through the process of, you know, putting in new infrastructure that might be obsolete at that time. So I, I'm concerned about that one. I don't know what the, how much of a home you're. So I, I'm concerned about that one. I don't know what the, how much of a home you're, we're speaking about. Is it a hundred percent or seventy-five percent when you're talking about a rebuild in the case of a natural disaster, an emergency like that? And then the new construction, a hundred percent versus seventy-five percent? I'm, I'm actually curious the number of permits that we've taken out in the last decade in town around seventy-five percent remodels. Like, how, what, what's the frequency with which we actually do that versus fifty percent or fifty-one percent down or whatever? So that's something that I, I'd like to learn a little bit more about from staff before I, you know, figure out what the appropriate definition of new buildings are. But, but as far as everything else, I, I think it's, it's appropriate for the moment that we're in. So thank you to the Climate Action Committee again, and I'll leave it all to you now.
Thank you, Chance. Stephanie?
So appreciate your, am I muted? Oh, thank you so much, Councilmember Katrana. That was really appreciated. And I also appreciate what Jody Timms shared and I, the only thing I would change about it is, you know, it's, it's not sooner or later, like later is now as far as I'm concerned. Because it is a crisis and it's gonna make, it's gonna create some discomfort for myself included. We all have to commit to solutions for this crisis and on, and, and I don't want to trivialize this, but we don't develop that many new commercial and residential buildings every year. And to your point, Councilmember Katrana, on the seventy-five percent, I would venture to say there's not a high volume of those either, the, the, the remodels of seventy-five percent or more. So we're focused on new. That's the CAC recommendation, new buildings. And I would like to include the seventy-five percent remodels or more. I also, we haven't talked about, you know, going the health and safety code route, which is the recommendation of the CAC. Certainly not going the not even discussing reach codes. So, because that's not the path we want to go from the, for a multitude of reasons. So I guess that's all I have to say. As far as the low-rise residential, I'm not, I, I don't really follow the logic there. And I, I think we should keep it as simple as possible. And I appreciate Renee, Councilmember, your comments on affordable housing. My understanding is that the, the initial setup costs are lower for electric than it is for, for gas. So, you know, I, I haven't done the research on affordable housing, but I don't know why that wouldn't apply to an affordable housing development. I'm done. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just jump in, if I may. I, I don't have a, a much to add to what Councilmember Katrana and Vice Mayor Hellman have shared and I appreciate the public and certainly appreciate the work of the CAC to bring us such a clear white paper. Actually, it really lays it out very, very clearly. I encourage the public to read that white paper. It's the most non-intimidating white paper I've ever read. So, you know, we know, we know very clearly that our emissions are coming from our buildings and our transportation sector. And we are the high resource areas, meaning in order to build something here, it requires, it, it, it's built at great cost. Meaning that when we talk about equity in all things and we talk about who bears the burden of our choices and our choices to continue emitting, it's the lower resource, the lower resource areas. And so we have an opportunity. And so our opportunity here is to be bold and to take the leadership in order to do, I think, exactly what it is that the CAC has crafted for us. I don't think we're ready for anything that has to do with remodels yet. I think that, that a first step in all-new construction is, is the, is the prudent way to go. And I just see this as an opportunity. I, I think the health and safety code route is the way to, to go. And yeah, I don't have anything more to add. I look forward to, to moving forward. I think that having a time lapse so that there's a longer rollout period makes a lot of sense. But I, I, I would really recommend us moving forward with the CAC's recommendation.
Thank you. Barbara?
Yeah, so thank you, everyone, and thanks to the CAC. I guess I didn't say thank you because it seems like we've taken this up a few times. And I feel like I have appreciated what they've done. I think one of the things that they have in their list is exempting commercial kitchens.
That's right.
And I think that is a good idea. And just one issue, Councilmember Katrana, you mentioned the issue of disasters. I just, my concern there is typically if you are completely wiped out from a fire or flood, and that did happen here in two thousand five, two thousand six, is you don't want to add on to people's troubles and if possible, they can get their original plans and, and just rebuild without developing new plans. And that's why I'm trying not to add on to the troubles of folks. Now, I do think if we do have another disaster, and let's hope we don't, or we don't for quite a while, is maybe we will be at the stage where the Energy Commission will update those codes and it will be required. But I hope we can just really consider what happens when somebody is truly at a loss and allow them the most flexibility as possible. So that's where I was going with that. You know, I'm, I think CAC did a good job. I raised some of the issues that I'd like to consider for exemptions and I believe I heard from at least one of you the idea where you're building an ADU that's attached. That's part of the original construction. And I do like the idea of just staying with new construction for now. We can always revisit this as we go on and look at a seventy-five percent remodel or even a greater than fifty percent. I, I don't think we have statistics on seventy-five percent remodels because you have to go to the planning commission and you have a greater than fifty percent. So I, I'd like us to stay with new construction for commercial and for residential. And the commercial kitchen exemption. And at least some idea of a few of the things I've thrown out that we can craft very limited exemptions. So those are my thoughts and I want to thank everybody who's worked so hard on this. And I do work on climate change work for my work. So I'm quite an advocate. But I also know it happens as we try to burden people with more responsibilities.
Um, Mayor, if I may, before, before you speak, I, I just want to make sure that we can make sure that the, the researching, some of the affordable housing, you know, effects comes back to us. Because I, I do know that there's both sides and it's just, I think, really important that, that we know what we're doing before we move forward. So thank you for that.
Thanks. So I'll take my turn. I, not surprisingly being that I'm on the CAC as well, I support the, the the recommendations of the white paper. I agree with Renee that we should, and I don't know quite how to do this tonight, except to direct staff to, unless we come up with any more ideas about it tonight, it's a nice discussion, direct staff to think about the affordable housing as some sort of, is there any way to make an, any exemption to consider that? I'm not sure whether we should or not because I would, I would say that one of the key things to think about here and, and Councilmember Katrana mentioned this, is the stranded assets issue. And in a way, by, we, we know that this is the direction things have to go. We don't know exactly when it's gonna happen. We don't know exactly how it's gonna happen. But a hundred years from now, we're not gonna be burning fossil fuels. A lot less than a hundred years from now, we're not gonna be burning fossil fuels. Somehow or another, this is gonna end. And we're gonna enter a new age of where energy comes from, which is present-day sunlight. And so in a way, it is actually helping people by saying, if you're gonna build a new house, build it in a way that's gonna actually work in the future. By the time you get the house done, you don't find out that actually you built the wrong house. And it does actually save money in the building, as it says in the, in the white paper. Because if you, if you have just a little bit of natural gas in the building, it doesn't save any money because you still have to put in the natural gas infrastructure. You actually have a natural gas bill with PG&E, which means you're paying your monthly fee plus the natural gas that you use every month. All of that goes away if you don't use any gas in the building. And so there's, there's a reason there for focusing on new construction and for, and for saying that it's a, it's completely all-electric with new construction because that actually does save money in the construction process. So there's, there's that side of it with regard to, with regard to affordable housing, both the stranded assets and the saving of money on construction. But I'd be, I'd be certainly interested in entertaining anything that we might come up with that would really help with building affordable housing because that is a critical issue. As the ordinance says, new, or as the recommendation says, new buildings is what this is focusing on. The CAC was very clear that we would start with that because that just, that's not going to affect very many people in Fairfax right now and it allows us to understand how this works. And we think that the whole tide is moving in this direction anyway. And so this is a place we can start right now. There are not that many new buildings. So new buildings will need to be defined. Something like seventy-five percent sounds like a reasonable definition, but I'm content to leave that to staff to research how to, how to define that in a proposed ordinance. The health and safety route seems like the way to go, as the recommendation says. The commercial kitchen exemption is, I think, a reasonable exemption. And, and I would just point out, I know you wanted to say something, Renee, but I'll just point out in my little list of comments here, that there are other ways to get energy besides electric. One of them being solar thermal. So for example, you can get solar hot water heating. And that's actually underutilized. It's something that, that works very well if you have the solar exposure. It's a really efficient way to heat up water and that'll work without electricity, gas or anything. It just works when the sun shines. And batteries, we, we're starting to see now, we're trying to work on this with the pavilion as a demonstration project of it, that you could use an electric vehicle as the battery to help run your, your house. And so that, there, there are just a lot of new ways of thinking about things that are, that make this. We're, we're gonna find our way through this, but we do, as, as Jody said, as Chance said so eloquently, we really have to. We have to move. We can't, we can't keep kicking the can down the road. And we can't keep expecting somebody else to do it. So I'm in favor of the ordinance of the, of, of moving this forward as it's written. And Renee, what did you need to?
Actually, both my colleagues had their hands up. So maybe we should all just choose to use virtual hands. So I'm gonna hand it over to you guys and I'll ask my question.
I'm not even looking at virtual hands. I'm looking at attendees. Sorry. I have my attendees screen up. Who has a real hand up? Can somebody put a real hand up? Okay. Chance?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I just had two, one, one question and one potential suggestion. The question, if the CAC had any discussion about the definition of new building, it sounds like the county's model ordinance defines new building as more than seventy-five percent demolished. And so that's, that's why I even brought that number back in, in, in my comments too, because it sounds like that's standard practice. So that, I'm just laying that out there because I, I think I'm open to that as well. If the county and other agencies and municipalities are approaching it that way versus just a hundred percent. The, the suggestion was, I know how much Councilmember Goddard and Councilmember Kohler care about affordable housing. They're both on the committee. Councilmember Goddard brought this forward just now and I, I thought maybe if it wasn't just left to staff, maybe they would, they would be interested in forming a subcommittee to engage as the sort of folks that focus on affordable housing and maybe reach out to some affordable housing nonprofit developers or for-profit developers, I don't know, and get, get something that could, could come back when we receive the ordinance or the, the resolution from staff. So just wanted to throw that out there, not volun, not, not volunteering you for anything. I know you're both very busy and I'm happy to participate if, if necessary, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
And I'm happy to do that. I, I have a couple of people that I'll reach out to instead of just doing my studies and books. So I'll bring that back or I'll, I'll relay my information to staff so that it can come to us.
I would appreciate that. And, and while you're at it, just the general question for any affordable housing people you're talking with of what can we do in general as we think about the, the housing element? What can we do in general to try to incentivize affordable housing in town? Yeah, that's what we, I think we've heard a lot of support for that.
So, Mayor, I have one comment is, and then one suggestion. And I'm happy to work with Councilmember Goddard on reaching out to folks, but remember, the county's ordinance is dealing with electric preferred. It's not elect, all-electric. So my vote, if it's cared about, is for new construction only, which is pretty simple. It's not dealing with a seventy-five percent, you know, remodel. New construction is new construction. And so that's where I would go with that. But the other thing I would suggest to staff, and I can reach out to them as well, is regarding this issue of affordable housing, we have experts that I work with through the CDBG group, the group that gives out HUD money, Lily Thomas, Liz Darby. I think they will have a pretty good feel because some of what happens is a lot of affordable housing, hundred percent, gets tax credits for a lot of their money, just like Victory Village did. But they also get federal HUD money, which has a lot of strings associated with that. So sometimes there are strings that you really wouldn't anticipate. And I can actually reach out to those folks at the county and find out more if there is some sort of bugaboo about this. So we don't want to be hindering a hundred percent affordable housing for sure. Or even in the case where somebody is doing a mixed project where they plan to do quite a lot of affordable housing. And we know they're difficult to pencil out. So I can reach out to them as well and talk more to Councilmember Goddard. I think she has some ideas. I have ideas about folks we can reach out to, but I think we can feed that into staff. So thank you.
Thank you. So do we have, it sounds like we have a Garrett was asking us to get our, our list of questions together and then to go through them. But it sounds like from the comments, I've heard that we probably have a majority in favor of just basically what the, what the recommendation was. And with the question of looking into affordable housing and, and I think Barbara put it pretty well about whether there's anything that, an unforeseen consequence that might affect affordable housing because of HUD money or so forth. because of HUD money or so forth. And the question of whether, how to define new construction, 75% has been brought up or 100% new construction. However, that's be, that's to be defined. Are there any other questions that you recorded, Garrett, that you think we need to give further direction on?
Well, if, obviously, it, it would be helpful if you formalize that direction, but from what it sounds like, you're saying you like to prepare an ordinance based on the CAC's recommendation. Caveat being two council members may share back information related to affordable housing. Maybe you'll want to consider some level of exemption for affordable housing. That remains to be seen. The, it's a new definition. It's not particularly clear to me. I mean, the county uses 75%. And what we need to know is, is the council saying that's okay to follow that? Or you want something different? Because there are differences, right? 75% in essence is you leave one wall up and you dumb all the rest of everything else. New construction could be defined as property that's never had any development on it. Or at least within a timeframe, there's been no development on it. So that, does that count if you buy a house, knock it down? Is that considered new construction or is that considered rehab? More importantly, I just want to know, is there a majority saying 75%? Or you still want to think about it? And so when we come back to you, we can give you, we would end up giving you some options. Is that what you're saying?
I like the idea of options.
Okay. Stephanie, you, you.
I was just going to say, you know, if someone's demoing their home by 75%, when's the next opportunity that they're going to go green? Probably another 50 years?
I.
I mean, but when we say options, sorry, Bruce, when we say options, what do you mean by that?
I, I mean definitions. So you could have a variety of definitions. You can follow the counties. You could have something where it's new construction is defined as thing, property is vacant and our house is knocked down. That's considered new construction, previously developed, or no house was on it for the last two years or whatever. There's lots of different things. There's not, you know, we can come back with stuff like that. Whether that makes the discussion any easier, I don't know, but you can pick at different levels. I'm pretty sure 75% though is your minimum of, you don't want to go lower than that.
If I, I'll just say, and Chance, I see your hand up. What I believe the CAC's idea was in the recommendations with saying that this, the recommendation here is to, is to go all electric for new construction. I believe the reason for that, the spirit of that was that this is not, this would not be an ordinance that would say that anybody needs to take out their gas infrastructure. This is only saying if you're building something new, then build it in, as an all-electric. And so with that spirit, I mean, if you had one wall standing and you had to build the other three walls, but that one wall had all the gas infrastructure already in it, that was the wall that the gas stove was on, then maybe that's one thing. But, you know, it's, it's, that's the spirit of what the intention was of the recommendation was that at this point, we're just saying, if you're building a home from scratch, you're building a building from scratch. So that you have the opportunity to save on the construction cost of doing gas and save on putting the sunk assets into all that gas infrastructure. Then that's what, that's what the intention was with this. And actually, I would want to comment, let me just let Chance go because you had your hand up. And then I'll, I have one more thing I'd like to say, many more things, but I'll just say one.
Thanks, Mayor. I, I just had a, a wonder if staff would be able to, and we could do this too as individual council members, but to, to sort of compile of the various types of all-electric, obviously different municipalities have taken various approaches. But to get their definitions of new buildings as well would be helpful in terms of, in the spirit of having options of definitions would be helpful. I just want to throw that out there.
Okay. Yeah, the comment that I wanted to make was just with regard to, and I, Councilmember Kohler, you said something I didn't, I didn't quite understand. Maybe I didn't catch it right, that natural gas was considered zero carbon except for the extraction.
Yeah, it's considered carbon-free except for extraction. So when we in MCE look at what's carbon-free, it is carbon-free except for the extraction part. And so that's why there still is some natural gas being purchased by MCE.
That completely baffles me. I mean, when you're, and the byproducts are water and carbon dioxide. And so it's, it's not carbon-free. But I will say that the extraction is, it, this is something that we've learned over the last decades that natural gas used to be considered, they called it a transition fuel back in the Carter era. The idea was that way we'll get to solar, which was, sounded very impractical at that time. But the way we would get there is by going with natural gas. As the decades move on, the time gets a lot shorter and we just don't have time for a transition fuel. But the other thing we've learned is that natural gas has this huge, huge carbon equivalent footprint due to its extraction and its piping and its storage. And that, that turns out, my understanding is that turns out to be larger than the burning itself. So it's not carbon-free when you burn it, but.
But similarly, extracting lithium for batteries is quite carbon-intensive. So there's a lot of that. Can I just take a circle back a little bit? I hear where we're going with this, but I did throw a couple of things out on the table. If you guys want to vote them down, so be it. But I had thrown out the idea of, in the event of a rebuild for a disaster, providing exemption for that. Also, looking at the possibility of a very limited exemption for pools and spas, not all of them. And I would have staff kind of look into that. And then also, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page for ADUs that are part of an existing building. So I just want to make sure when we give staff direction, that they're coming back understanding what we're asking them to do. So there may be that we need to take votes on that. And then I'm also still of the mind that the 75% number is for electric preferred. So I would prefer that staff come back with options for what new construction entails. Different definitions. I think it will be difficult to compile much on that. So I don't want to give them a huge job on that, but I think they can give us some various options for what that entails when they bring the ordinance so that we can have a more constructive discussion. So I would like us to at least have some sort of straw vote on some of that stuff.
Yeah, I, I think we can go through a straw vote on that. So you had, let's take pools and spas.
Just a ti, a little bit more discussion, just to make sure, make sure I understand. You deterred me in thinking about pools and spas.
Think about one of the other ones. That's fine.
Your other one was the 70, the, the natural disaster. Is there some way that this can be written, that there's an electric preferred when someone's rebuilding? I, I, it, that's probably not the word we would use because that's a thing, but it seems, I mean, i- it seems to me that we would want to encourage to the best of our ability, someone to, to rebuild electric. But I understand your, you know, your, your sensitivity to this, which makes sense that if that's an added burden for them.
If there's a way to do that, that works out legally, that sounds like a good, a good way to go. I'm just not sure that you can do that in an ordinance, but Councilmember Cutrone appears to have an idea.
Yeah, yeah.
An idea.
I, I was just, uh, thinking about it i- in the context of Janet is, our town attorney's still on the line, I believe. And in the past, I know she's mentioned there, you know, there's, there, there's a particular type of language that you can include in an ordinance that says like, you know, it's like, it, it gives us an out. It's like unless there's something that supersedes this, unless the, and I, and I would agree to this, you know, to this concept, i- if we could include that language that, yeah, if there's, you know, as long as, you know, it's, it's legal. If there's, if there's a state mandate that says otherwise, then we, we defer to that would, would be the, my preference there. But I, I know it's been included in other ordinances in the town before to have that sort of, that out.
Should we ask Janet to weigh in since she is our attorney?
Well, I'm not sure I understand. I've been trying to understand exactly what it is you're talking about. You want to do, when you say an out, unless, and I guess the out would be that you're thinking of Councilmember Cutrone is the, unless otherwise required by law?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's a pretty standard, you know, phrase that gives you kind of an out for other things that you're not specifically mentioning that might influence whatever it is the, you're requiring. So that's a very general phrase that can always be included. I mean, that's, is that what you're thinking of?
That, that is exactly what I was thinking of, just acknowledging that we, we want to have this intention of supporting folks that are going through some sort of tragedy or disaster, but at the same time acknowledging that in, in that language that, you know, there might be a state law that, that supersedes it at the time of that event. And maybe that language helps to address that.
And Janet, is there a way to do what Renee suggested, which is if, if you're providing an exemption for people going through a rebuild because of a natural disaster? But you also have what Councilmember Cutrone just suggested, in case the laws change and it's all required, that's the end of it. But I think Councilmember Goddard was also suggesting, is there a way to also write the language so that you could encourage somebody to go all-electric in that event rather than requiring them necessarily to do it? Can you do that in an ordinance?
So you mean.
So if you provide an exemption for people who are rebuilding because of disaster.
Right.
It would be a new construction because they'd be rebuilding. I think you can relate to this. But you, you want to say, if you had gas before, you can do it, but we encourage you or we prefer you to go all-electric.
Sure.
Can you do that in an ordinance?
Sure, yeah.
So you can write language like that?
Yes.
Okay, well, then I think that gets where we're trying to get is, well, I don't know what the rest of the council thinks, but I see that the idea is we're providing exemption just so we don't add to the burdens of a disaster. But then we're also encouraging them to go this way. And then with Councilmember Cutrone's addition, unless already required by law, if CEC changes all the codes, then they would still have to go there.
Can I make a comment?
Definitely.
I'm totally on board with this concept of not wanting to add insult to injury in the cases of natural disaster and residents have to rebuild. But I guess what I'm wondering is if you write it in a way that just encourages, like, you're basically just saying, we'd like you to, but you don't have to, right? So is there a way where we could actually offer an incentive? You know, because I don't, I don't really, I'm not really tracking what the point of writing that into law, saying, we'd like you to do this, but you don't have to, like, that, that's not a law, you know? So is there something that we can do to incent?
Well, I, if I can comment on this, this thread about the rebuilding after a, let's say instead of a natural disaster, let's say a rebuilding after a house is completely destroyed. So it's a complete rebuild. But especially if we're talking about a natural, a disaster, a fire, whatever, where you've got a whole neighborhood that needs to be rebuilt. That was the kind of situation that was happening in Coffee Park. And there was an opportunity there, which I think was missed to actually say, let's not build the entire gas infrastructure all under the streets to that subdivision. And that's where, going back to the fact that the main harm that natural gas causes as far as, as far as climate change is the, the infrastructure. So those pipes under the street are really important. And by saying, here's an opportunity to actually not have pipes under the street that have natural gas in this entire subdivision. That was an opportunity that was unfortunately missed, primarily, I think, because people just couldn't act fast enough. It wasn't a time when, when a major new legal framework could be built up because people were busy just trying to rebuild their neighborhood. And so this might be a time for us to think forward and say that if we have that opportunity to rebuild anew, that maybe the fact that we used to have gas infrastructure doesn't, that isn't necessarily a reason why we have to build it again. I mean, if you have a car and it gets wrecked, you don't have to go out and get a car that's just like that car. You would get a car that's newer and presumably has, you know, is better in some way. So there would kind of be that same concept that, that that's, that's actually an opportunity to make an even deeper change. So I'm not sure, I mean, I don't want to add insult to injury, as Stephanie said. I think I, I'm certainly not interested in doing that, but I think that we might be. I'm just not seeing why that would be the point at which we would say, well, wait a minute, let's go ahead and build a gas infrastructure. And the theory of what we've, what we're looking at here is that it, you actually do save money on the construction side of things. And so if someone was rebuilding, that would be a good time to save money. If the whole neighborhood is rebuilding, there might be even more money saved because there's even more infrastructure that doesn't have to be rebuilt. So I'm, I'm just not sure where that's going. Appreciate the thought, but I'm not, I'm not getting that.
It's much different in the con, yeah, in the context of one individual home versus an entire neighborhood or community. Then it, then obviously that economy of scale starts to change the equation a bit. Great points, Mayor.
Garrett?
So let's have this suggestion. It's, I think, you can either, it sounded like Councilmember Kohler wanted you to go, maybe even go through her list and just give a yea or nay. I know you, I know, Mr. Mayor, you, you were kind of saying, well, it seems like there's consensus not to do it. But it's up to a majority of you if you, if you like to do that. But more importantly, for staff, it sounds like there's some key items that you could provide direction on. So there's items A through E, so maybe you go through that, give us some discussion. Then we can hold off, we could have the exemption discussion. And there's a couple of things you want us to do some research. So maybe that's a suggestion to provide some direction to staff.
So you're suggesting we go through items A through E and just make sure that we're all in agreement on each of those?
Yes, to start with, and then there's the exception discussion. So A is, it sounds like the council will like to adopt an ordinance in health and safety code. And all it takes is a, that's a thumbs up from everybody. So, okay. Uh, and it sounds, okay, B is apply the ordinance to all types of building uses, meaning all new residential and commercial. Set aside the definition of new. So that's a, all the council members think that's a good idea. And exempting commercial kitchens. It sounded like you all thought that was a good idea, but is that all a good idea? Okay, I'd say, I think it looks like a thumbs up and nod.
May I ask for a clarification on the residential? Is it low-rise residential or is it residential?
I think they said all residential.
All types of buildings, yeah. As long as it's new construction.
Okay. And then we have the, what was that? Oh, apply ordinance to any new buildings. I, I think you've already agreed it should only apply to new buildings.
Define that, right.
Uh, and then E was saying you're not adding any additional energy requirements for the buildings. And it seems like you're all on board with that. And it seems like you're all on board with that. Then we have the issues uh, related to exemptions, uh, and if, and one Councilmember Kohler was low-rise buildings. It sounded like the majority of you didn't wanna exempt low-rise buildings, but to confirm, it's a majority of you not want to exempt low-rise buildings?
I wasn't asking for an exemption of low-rise buildings. I was asking to keep it to low-rise buildings.
Limited to.
And it would be three stories or less because I think it's cheaper, but I'm fine with just all residential or all commercial. I, I'm not gonna argue. I don't think we're gonna be doing a bunch of high-rise buildings anyway.
Okay. Uh, let's decide the new construction issue. Uh, the issue of disaster. Um, one of the things we do need to do is develop a disaster recovery code that governs these type of things.
Yes, we have talked about.
So that you can rebuild what you had. I guess the question here is there's one thing to rebuild what you have, there's another thing to ask it to be all electric, and then there's another thing that's somehow either creating a incentive or you're creating a preferred approach where to do a mix, to do all electric, you have certain standards, do a mixed feel, similar to county, you actually have additional energy requirements, so the incentive is to do all electric. That, I think, gets a little more complicated. Not that we couldn't do that, but the core question is, did you want to consider an exemption for homes to have to rebuild due to some disaster, whether it's fire, flood, or otherwise?
I'm not seeing.
So I see one thumbs up, I see two no's, and I thought I had, looks like two are thinking.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, Mayor, the Mayor brought up some really critical issues if we're talking about the long term. Um, so I, I'm not, I'm not ready at this point to, to, to thumbs up to um, not requiring on a, you know, a house, a destroyed house. But I, I, I would go with uh, with uh, with requiring electric at this point, but I, 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 I don't think we've had a chance to think all the way through it, cause this could have ma- massive implications.
Could I ask a question? Uh, so, you know, if i- in a typical remodel or, or rebuild, I'm not super sure, but um, if if it was a one-off, could a homeowner go to the planning commission or go to the council or request some sort of variance or some sort of exemption? Or, you know, if it's a one-off versus this, what, what the mayor has played out, which could be something that's, that's larger scale and maybe that would, you know.
So you go to the planning, you could go to the planning commission, but the problem is you're adding huge costs to do that. So usually with the disaster recovery, um, you want people to be able to take their old plans and just rebuild. If you're requiring them to go to the planning commission, then you're, they're drawing new plans, potentially the planning commission can ask for all these changes. So you're adding a huge amount of expense and time potentially. So just so you know, I mean, why don't we just take a vote on either the disaster exemption or not? And have, and I think uh, Garrett talked about two ways to do it. Right? What were the two ways?
So under your recovery code, you could either exempt disaster or rather than incentives, you would do something to where they could have gas, but they have to meet higher energy requirements.
And that again is adding to the burden. So I think it would be better to just do a simple vote on are you gonna exempt them or not? And let's just vote on that and, you know, end this part, you know, if, if I am not successful, so be it.
Well, if I can get just one more comment in, I, I would vote no. But I would say that as Garrett mentioned, something that we've talked about off and on over the years is to try to come up with some kind of code about what would happen if there were a major fire and a number of houses needed to be rebuilt. Then, you know, in some sort of situation, however it be defined like that, that is a very, obviously a very difficult situation, but among the difficulties is the fact that the planning commission would be overwhelmed, everybody would be, it's just a really difficult time to have to go through and start from scratch. And so we have talked about that, of, of some kind of concept of how people would rebuild efficiently and sort of get quickly into rebuilding. And um, I think that would be a good thing to think about.
So we're not, but we're not doing that now.
We're not doing that now. And so I would say not to do an exemption to this now, any more than we have other exemptions to all sorts of other building codes for that situation, but that I would support at some point us thinking about an overall approach to rebuilding after a disaster that streamlines things for people as much as possible.
So why don't we just do it, uh, if people want an, don't want an exemption, raise your thumb.
Don't want an exemption.
No.
Okay, so no exemption. You could always think about it later when we do our recovery ones. Okay, uh, any exemptions for pools and spas?
I just wanna mention a very limited type exemption where people can't use solar.
Okay, so it's, if you can demonstrate solar's not gonna work for your pool and spa.
Well, can, can I actually just anecdotally, um, I have a broken hot tub, but it's electric and it worked. And when it worked, it worked well on electric. Um, and it was more costly, but it is, it, it, it works. So it ju- just, it's not an impossible thing to run your pool or spa on electric.
Hmm, I, I think the only thing, just so, and I talked to a pool contractor on the electric, eating a pool with electric would be crazy expensive unless you have solar, but if you don't have solar, you have to have natural gas. But with natural gas, there's a product out there that the natural gas can heat your pool to a certain level, and then you can kick in a heat pump to maintain it. So there are things there, but again, that just creates more things to think about. So I think the base question is, do you allow pools or spas with exemptions if you can demonstrate that you can't have solar? Or solar is inefficient, or something like that.
If, if I could clarify just really quickly, so what we're saying is, if somebody decides to have a pool or a spa in their new development, then they would get all the infrastructure for fossil fuels.
With a loophole.
It's just a loophole. So everybody, everybody just apply for your pools, right?
Well put, yeah.
And we're gonna have to put one down to, to that idea.
Yeah.
I think if we're just looking at new construction, um, I would say I'm voting against it for new construction. Um, and I think I'm the only one who brought this up. But I think for existing, which we're not touching right now, that's okay, because they won't be in the middle of this. So for new construction, it makes a heck of a lot of sense to require them to put in the electric, even though it's expensive. And um,
Okay, so, so no.
That's just on that one. Oops, thank you.
Uh, okay, uh, next one's A D U's, J D U's, but I think if it's attached to an existing building, it wouldn't apply anyway.
Then J A D U by definition wouldn't apply. That's the whole concept.
Detached, it would apply.
Yes.
Okay.
I think that was all. And then also the issue of the hundred percent affordable. I think Renee and I look into it and also Garrett, if you can contact some of your contacts just to see if there's some uh, limitations or difficulties having things pencil out uh, for affordable, if we all redo that before the next ordinance.
Okay, we could do that. And then the issue of new, new construction. Uh, let me just ask this question. It's, are majority of you supportive of the seventy-five percent, or you want us to come back to you with options?
I like the idea of options. But I may be the only one.
I like seventy-five. I, I know other towns are, are using fifty today, but um, so seventy-five feels.
So I see Chance, um, I mean, Councilmember Katrona, Vice Mayor Hillman.
Have we looked? Do, 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 do we know, um, do we know which, and I think you brought this up, uh, Chance, which cities municipalities that have these are uh, what they're doing for new, for defining new?
Mill Valley uses fifty.
Where does?
Mill Valley?
Valley.
Fifty.
Valley is only electric preferred, as is San Antonio, so it's completely different.
Yeah, I was, I guess I was wondering about like the Windsor, Berkeley.
Oh, you're talking about, okay.
San Francisco, like, yeah, what are their definitions?
Could you, we can find out.
Yeah, I would recommend, um, Garrett, that you bring us those options. If we could get that information, that would be useful.
We can get some. I, I, just to be clear, I wasn't planning to look at every thirty, fifty ordinances out there.
No, and maybe, maybe.
I'm only gonna look at a, we're only gonna look at a few, to get an idea. Okay.
Be helpful.
Okay. I think that's it.
Okay.
I think we have the direction.
Uh, just on the new construction definition, again, as I said, I think that the spirit of this is we're trying to not tell anybody they have to take out their gas infrastructure right now. So that's the point of it being new construction. So whatever definition makes sense, that's the, that's the concept anyway. Okay. That was helpful. Thank you, Garrett, for uh, reining us in and
Yeah.
and leading us through this. And thank you all for considering it. It's uh, it's a step. Yeah.
Can we take a five-minute break, Mayor?
Yes, absolutely. I'm happy about that idea. Okay, it is nine forty-seven. How about we take a, uh, how about we go until nine fifty-five? That's a little longer than five minutes. Okay, thanks. All right. Reconvening after that refreshing break. Um, it is close to ten o'clock, and so per the ten o'clock rule, we should just, uh, we've only got one item left on the agenda. And so I would certainly propose that we continue. Everybody in agreement with that?
Aye.
Okay, let's do it. All right, um, Garrett, would you like to begin with the staff report on item four?
Item four, sure. So item four is discussed, considered an extension to the terms of a temporary outdoor encroachment permit, which we call a T E P, and to temporary use permits, which you call a T U P from the end of May, May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, to September seventh, twenty twenty-one. Um, we're also requesting the council start the broach discussion of the use of the outdoor public spaces and provide direction to staff. So may it would help with some background, cause it's been a while, is back in June twenty twenty, you remember, in response to COVID nineteen restrictions, you took actions to allow for outdoor dining and busy uses, business uses. Specifically, you adopted a resolution to allow staff to issue temporary outdoor encroachment permits, again, T E Ps to allow outdoor dining, business uses in the public right of way, such as parking spaces or parks. Uh, you also adopted an urgency ordinance to create a process for temporary use permits to allow businesses to use their private spaces, such as their parking lots for outdoor business uses. There's no fee for a T P, there's no fee for a T U P, and both are approved administratively. So back in November twenty twenty, the council actually adopted a regular ordinance for temporary use permits, cause the orange you adopted in June was urgency ordinance, and at that time, you also adopted a resolution that created the expiration date for temporary use permits, may, may, May thirty-first of this year. Uh, at that time, you also adopted a resolution to make the T E Ps consistent with the temp, with the T U Ps, and you set the deadline for that also at May thirty-first. Um, you really did that six-month extension, cause obviously we still had COVID nineteen restrictions. It was somewhat unclear when restrictions would be lifted, and part of that was you knew there was a niche, a lot, there's an initial capital investment for people to build these structures in our parking spaces. So currently, right now, the T P in our parking spaces, pretty much they're platforms, railings, recoverings, that's what's in there. Uh, pre, uh, right now, we have six businesses with structures in parking spaces. We have two businesses using sidewalks for dining tables, and then one primarily using the monolot. We have eight T U Ps out there. We actually have eight T Ps, temporary encroachment permits, actually out there right now. So what's going on right now? Well, Marin County is in the orange tier, was trending to yellow. They were hoping to go to yellow actually today, but it's actually been delayed. So, um, so we have to wait till we go to the yellow tier. We even have more relax, relaxed restrictions. Recently, as you heard, the governor talked about fully reopening California, June fifteenth. Not sure exactly what that means, but if, and we're not sure if the June fifteenth date would slide, cause that depends on lots of different conditions being met at that time. But the one thing that we wanted to do as staff to get direction from council is that May thirty-first is coming up. And so staff were actually recommending the council extend that deadline from May thirty-first to September seventh. And the reason we picked September seventh, that's after Labor Day, presumably, uh, that would take us through the end, obviously through spring, almost the end of summer. Hopefully, all the schools K through twelve are back in, colleges are back in, and they're somewhat of returned to normalcy. And so that timeframe then would allow us time to have a more robust discussion with the community on the use of the outdoor spaces, uh, whether or not we should continue to allow those type of uses, whether we should create some more public uses in those spaces, as well as hear more from the business community and the residents, what they think about the use of these outdoor spaces. Part of that process, we think we do online community surveys of the community and the businesses um, to get kind of more information for the council as you have that discussion. I think overall, we think it's about twenty parking spaces impacted by the use of the public spaces and the mono parking lot. I think for tonight, what we're looking for again is direction on the extensions, because if you agree to extend it to some date, we actually will need to come back to you in May with two resolutions to extend the dates for the T U Ps and the T E Ps. Something to keep in mind is that Summer Fells actually runs theirs till November twenty twenty-two. And that was because they were hoping by doing that, businesses would do, put more capital investment into structures to make them look nicer. I believe Novato Mill Valley's runs in the year November, December. I don't know whether or not they'd be considering to extend that. So again, what, we're requesting a staff's direction on what to do for the extension dates. And then two, we're suggesting that there's some policy issues that you wanna start the discussion. We're not asking you to make a decision, because obviously you need lots more input from the community businesses. And those discussions include things like, what do you wanna do with mono lot, continued closure? I mean, some point if we move to a hundred percent indoor dining, we still need to close that lot. Again, our impression is probably when that adjacent business who's maintaining it, which is great, cause stall house, probably most of its patients probably use that lot the most. And then another thing to keep in mind, start a discussion is these outdoor structures. And so the term we would use is parklets, but that's not quite right, cause a parklet implies public use, open to the public. All these structures right now have, are limited to private uses. So that approaches that longer-term policy question of how do you wanna handle that moving forward? Create your own, allow private views, require them to share that space. So there's the questions we think it's good to start the discussion, not asking for any direction, because I don't think you can at this moment in time without all that community input, definitely direction on the expiration date. So that concludes the staff report, available for any questions.
Thank you. So to summarize it in one sentence, we're at this point just looking at extending the T E Ps and T U Ps. And during that time of that extension, there are a lot of things that we need to discuss.
That was a great summary.
Thank you. Brevity is not usually my strong suit, but I got that one. Renee?
Yeah, I, I, I have many things to say, but I'm gonna ask just a question. Um, so I, I'm, I'm curious, and, and it really hadn't dawned on me, wh- why are we treating the T E Ps and the T U Ps on the same timeframe? Uh, the reason I'm asking is that the temporary use permits, um, and people using their private parking lots, it seems to me that they don't need to be reviewed in three months. The, the encroachment permits, it, this is the larger discussion. But the use permits, do we need to revisit that in three months? Can we extend those a year?
You can extend those any length. The only reason we matched them up is previously for the council, you matched you match the T E Ps to match exactly with the T U Ps for consistency. So there's consistent understanding. It wasn't as confusing for the different businesses. But it is true, you, you can choose a different date for both. It's really up to the council. I kind of think you might want to keep them together as you discuss it because the reality is businesses that are using their parking spaces or outdoor dining are actually impacting parking because then there's less on-street parking. Because there's less off-street parking. So there are some impacts. There are some impacts there.
Okay, I just, that was, that was my question.
Can I ask, I know in the staff report you say there are eight T U Ps and that means that people are using their own parking lots. Excuse my ignorance, but I've seen a lot more of these parklets. And I'm not, could you just tell me at least some of those T U Ps? Other than, other than I.
Barbara freeze?
She froze.
Their sleepy hollow. I can't think of where they are.
Lost some of what you said, Barbara, but due to a technical something.
Okay, my internet connection is unstable, so I'm turning my video off. Just the question is, I just can't think of that are using their own spaces.
Yeah, so I'd have to look it up off the top of my head. I think you mentioned them, the dance studio. The lodge.
Three, and I guess I'm just trying to think of where a few of the others are.
Using the ball field for, or we were using it in School Street Plaza, there were, there was one.
Oh, that's right. School Street Plaza, there was one. I'm sorry, I, I just.
Okay, well, that's, that's all right. I just, I'm surprised because I see so many more of those parklets, way more than six. And I think there's quite a few.
Yeah, I think, I think there's, there's six. Two are using the side, there's six structures, two are using the sidewalks and one uses mono lot.
And I think you mentioned or imply that some of the people that are doing temporary encroachments haven't actually gotten those T E Ps, is that correct?
I think we've corrected that situation.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
So do we have our questions answered so that we can go to public comment on this and then come back to the discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and do that. Michelle, if you could see if we have any public comment?
Yes, Mayor. Members of the public, you would like to raise your hand now if you have a comment? I see one, Brenna Gubbins. I'm unmuting you now.
Hey, guys. Wow, and I guess I'm the only one going to speak, but I have, I just have a few questions. And as you guys know, I've written you a few times explaining my situation. But I have questions and concerns about the oversight and the acceptance of the parklets or the, whatever, I don't even, I don't know the acronym for it, but I love the parklets. I think they're awesome. And I personally, you know, go to the restaurants that have them. But at the same time, I've seen that there's some negative impacts or I've had negative impacts on my business. But, so some of the questions I have is, I'm just curious about who determines the size and location of each one and for each restaurant. Is there a consideration for neighboring businesses? Other, you know, like other businesses really rely on foot traffic and storefront visibility. Should, shouldn't there be a review process? And anyhow, the, those parklets like really impact both of these needs for those businesses. And that, I have live water surf shop for, I guess for everybody else who doesn't know, and I have a unique situation. My neighbors were opening up Amelie when, when COVID hit and I recommended or suggested that they extend in front of my shop and I really only thought it would be three months. But it's been much longer than that. I have a great relationship with my neighbors and we've finally come to a resolution about removing the roof that covers my shop. But I see that another parklet went up that blocks another retail business. And I'm just wondering how is this happening and where is the oversight? And that's about it. Thank you, guys. Oh, and I do suggest really before you make any decisions about extending permits that you really talk to the retail businesses or the other service businesses around to get a feel of what, how they're being impacted. Thanks.
Thank you, Brenna. And we have read your emails, definitely.
I do not see any other raised hands. Are there any other speakers on this issue? I don't see any, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so we'll bring it back to council. And I'll just say that, that what, what Ms. Gubbins was saying and, and not only on her behalf, which it sounds like she's pretty much worked it out with her neighbor business, but, but another business that we've been emailed about that has a similar situation where a restaurant was able to get a T E P and, and do something on the sidewalk and into the street. But that restaurant benefited from it, but the neighboring business, which wasn't a restaurant, ended up getting kind of in the shade of that T E P. So that seems to be those two instances now this issue. And I think it's a really valid question of how, how we think about that and whether we're, when we issue T E Ps, whether we're being careful to think these things through. And part of that is, is no doubt, as, as Brenna says, because when we first started doing these T E Ps, this didn't seem like it was going to last a year. But here we are, a year. And so that seems like a valid question. And it's certainly something we should think about among all those things we need to think about if, even if we extend this, that we need to think about before we come to the end of that extension. But maybe we need to think about it sooner than that because their business has been impacted, at least one right now today by, by an encroachment that was built and it's kind of covering this other business and limiting visibility for that business. So just agreeing with that speaker. I'll leave it at that. Barbara?
Yeah, so I have a couple of suggestions. I'm also, you know, a little concerned that folks are building parklets right now. When originally we were planning on ending this the end of May. And I think there is some perception out there that there'll be some blanket approval for all these parklets permanently. And I, I think that needs to be a really case by case discussion in the future. So I would encourage us, if we do some kind of extension, to cut off issuing more T E Ps or T U Ps right now because, I mean, I noticed the new one is just being built. And if we did not extend this, what are we talking about? And so I think that's a concern. So I think we need to sort of, if we extend, don't issue any new ones. My suggestion, which may or may not be popular, is that we consider an extension only till the end of July. And my thoughts there is, the governor is talking about June fifteenth as an opening day and removing tiers. And I also know that Marin just was not able to enter the yellow tier, which would have allowed a lot more uses. And so we don't know if we're, if we're going to go into a yellow tier before the tiers go away. And we also know that the governor did condition that June fifteen. But I think if we extended this more through the end of July or our next meeting, whenever that is, early August, that makes a little more sense to me because I think we would find out on June fifteen where we are. That would also allow us time if for some reason there's backsliding at the state level. But if we are truly open June fifteen, then I think we need to start really looking at these things on a case by case basis and see what makes sense. So that's just one thing I'm throwing out there. As far as the mono lot, you know, I'm not a frequenter, but I have been by it during the week more recently, and I've seen like one person at a time. Now, I'm not there on the weekend, so I don't know what's happening on the weekends. And I know we decided to close it seven days a week because it was just too much of a pain to only set up for a few days. So I understand that. But we have lost a lot of parking. And whether or not we have electric cars or gas cars, we still have quite a few cars and things are picking up quite a bit in town, particularly with the skate park. So that's why I think if we continue this and maybe extend only through the end of July, we could truly revisit the mono lot because it's a pain in the neck. If you were to park in there, you have to go in go backwards and forwards to park. And I think that would leave us more options. And if the tiers go away, then Gestalt House can open. And they won't necessarily need that. And I know others have been able to use it. But I think Gestalt House has been the main user. I also do believe one of the other policy questions was that I think that they should be open. They are parklets, which means that they should be open to others than just the patrons of those businesses. And I also want to thank you, Mayor Ackerman, for bringing up, you know, we have two businesses that have been impacted by a parklet that went kind of large and in front of another retail business. And when we started this discussion, I had concerns that we weren't necessarily thinking about the other businesses beyond the restaurants. So I don't think we should issue any more of these, but I also think to the extent that the new one going up is blocking a retailer, we need to not just leave it to the retail business to try to work it out. I think we need to go back and tell them they're not finished to shorten it some so that that doesn't impact that business. And so that's my thoughts. And I know staff had some current concerns. If we don't go all the way to the three months, that wouldn't give them a lot of time. I think we, we've got May to do some surveying even into June. And I think we can decide where we want to go. And I think if we extend it through the end of July or early August, you know, things are opening up so much. I see so many more people in town. I see so much more traffic with the schools. And I think the skate park, which is a positive thing, is also adding to a lot more folks downtown. So, thank you.
Thank you. Renee? You're muted.
Okay, yes, I was looking for the button. Well, I'm going to come in from a little different angle here. And that I'm under the, for me, downtown feels like a work in progress. There were some mistakes made in the beginning. We've had a lot of growing pains. We've made some, some blunders that have affected two of our businesses, as you've said. I'm thrilled to hear that Live Water has come to an agreement with Amelie. I think that's a model of success for how downtowns are, you know, figuring out how to resurrect themselves. San Rafael, every day is building new eateries, I'm going to call them. They are not parklets at this point. They are not being used for the public. They're being used for people's customers. That's something that it is, is in the process of being re-examined. And I will announce that John Bella, who was the original parklet designer in San Francisco, who did a workshop for us in helping us reimagine downtown at the onset of COVID, will be doing a Chamber of Commerce Zoom meeting for the businesses, which we will promote to make sure that this discussion of what a public space is and what the use of a public space is, whether at a parking place or, or a publicly owned parking lot, such as the Fairfax Plaza or Mono Lot, how that should, how that should work. This would be a vital community conversation that is part of the growing pains that is going to lead us to something really amazing downtown. I would, I would strongly caution us from backpedaling here. I believe that there are things that can be worked out between neighbors. There are things that we can do in the process of people's application for a permit that requires them to work with their neighbor, to have permission from that neighbor that it not encroach in front of their storefront or window. I think that rethinking the roofs has to happen because it's really diminished the sightlines on Bellinas. There are some problems, there's no doubt. But there are also three or four other businesses that have spoken to me directly about wanting to do some really cool stuff downtown. And so a month or two or even three is, is not going to allow us to generate a more coordinated and beautiful downtown and a thriving place for our businesses. The mono lot is packed. And yes, the predominant use is customers of the Gestalt House, but I have to add that they have maintained it and they've maintained it perfectly. At least over the last, since the last extension of the permit. I, I have, I have much to say. I don't believe three months is enough. I would extend it a year with some real criteria and stipulation about how these businesses have to work and whether they need to be modified in order to be fair and to be good neighbors. Some of this has to work in terms of how we deal with public space on a larger, on a larger scale, not just restaurant by restaurant using a parking place. It doesn't have, it's not integrated at this point. It's not a holistic way of looking at our town coming back to life. When we open indoors, some of these restaurants, they, they will have more capacity indoors, but they love the outdoors. People who've been against taking any parking, I'm talking about businesses, and granted, I'm talking about restaurants. So please forgive me to the retailers who are here. I do have some thoughts. But what, we need to allow this to, to develop into something, but we need to put some real guidelines and restrictions about how it works. I think putting a three month on it is just going to create a checkerboard downtown and it's going to look schlocky and people are going to be busting out the seams. I think our town has opportunity and we haven't tapped it yet. With the chamber, with, with John Bella, with our businesses right at the table together, I think we can do some fantastic things. I don't want to keep talking and taking all this space, but I really, really strongly would like to advocate for further exploration. I also would like to say that Bellinas, there's opportunity to create a slow street out of Bellinas to really, really highlight the fact that this is where people and restaurants and, and commerce is taking place just by signage or a banner or, and so I don't want this creativity to be stifled at this point. Our town, our town has, has opportunities that it's never had before. So please don't, let's not put too many constraints, but let's fix it. Let's look at the permitting process so that we make sure that we're not hurting one business to favor another. And that's all I'll say for now. And that's all I'll say for now, but I really do beg you to allow for some leeway to let this further evolve.
Thank you. Somebody better say something or I'm going to say something.
I'll say something real quick. Yeah. Thank you both, Councilmember Kohler and Councilmember Goddard. I it's no surprise that like my election, you know, came out of this pandemic. So there were a lot of pandemic-y things on on people's minds, but also people being able to encounter and to realize new ways of of being in town. And I think that these eateries and the other ways we've used public spaces, I've gotten a lot of feedback, both on the campaign trail. It was probably the number one issue in terms of people being inspired by this and wanting that sort of social connectivity. And I don't think post pandemic, people are going to not want social connectivity anymore. I think people like like being together and and I I did speak to some retailers. I recognize there are issues and I I think Councilmember Goddard's points are spot on. I think they're even speaking with John Bella before this, this meeting, acknowledging that, you know, certain designs don't fly, even in San Francisco, even in in bigger places, certain designs that we might be seeing currently being developed or proposed downtown, they don't fly. There are safety issues. There are there are issues with with neighboring or adjacent retailers and other businesses. And so I think those things can be and must be addressed. And at the same time, there are some retailers that I spoke with that are like the the fact that people are flocking to these sort of islands in what used to be just a parked car on a street, like the fact that people are around and buzzing and eating and drinking and hanging out and and, you know, popping into stores too, like it has benefited some retailers as well. So I did not do the full due diligence of speaking to every business, but I I have started to move in that direction as we've decided to initiate this conversation again. And I hope to do more of that. And I think it's going to be great for the chamber to to host that webinar with John Bella to talk about the possibilities moving forward. I I totally second and third the the points about the fact that these are public spaces and what are the obligations of businesses that are taking advantage of these public spaces? And so I hope we can continue that conversation with the businesses as well. I think the question, Councilmember Kohler, about the the timing, the the end of July, my wonder there is even if that if it's pushed back, if the the June 15th or the July 4th, you know, vision that that President Biden has, you know, if if that's all pushed back, it still would be, I'm curious, what survey results would look like post, you know, when we eliminate tiers? How how people want?
Governor Newsom, not President Biden.
President Biden said he wants to everybody to have a regular Fourth of July. That's his.
But Governor Newsom said June 15th, no more. Sorry for interrupting.
Yeah, no worry. No, I I'm just saying like, you know, both of these these visions, whether it's June or whether it's July, I think there's still an opportunity to gather data post tiers to figure out how people and businesses want to want to experience and enjoy downtown. So I I too am in favor of a longer term extension. I think the the real question is whatever comes back to us at our next meeting, you know, are we able to engage with businesses and have and and come forward with a fully informed position on what what an appropriate amount of time might be and and how how businesses might like the the adjacent businesses that have concerns, how that those concerns might be addressed in the interim. And so, yeah, I just want to continue to center the fact that like members of the public have definitely on the campaign trail and to date have continued to express their enthusiasm around this particular type of use of our public spaces. So, yeah, I'd be for the, you know, a longer, I don't know if it's six months to a year. I don't know what the the term is there, but I think there's an opportunity even post tiers to to get some survey data about how people want to experience things.
I'll just add one thought. Before all of you were on the council, but Bruce was involved. There was something called the closing of Bolinas Avenue and a lot about it used to public spaces and some of this has people's perceptions have changed because of COVID and because they've seen it can be different. But I can tell you that that was quite difficult and we withdrew that concept. So what I would just throw out there is there's a lot of folks in this town who may not be so amenable to all these changes. And I will also just say that before we start talking about really long extensions, I don't think just a survey is the right thing to do. I think there would be a need for a community conversation, which was a very that was difficult. Renee was mayor at the time, and I remember her turning around with tears in her eyes, saying, please help me as it it went off the rails. And she did a magnificent job of getting people's comments and getting us more discussing things than what was happening before then. But I just want to say that there's a lot of enthusiasm for what's happening right now. That may change as things open up. And and I also know that there are folks who have talked to me who aren't so happy with it. And so I think we we need to consider not a really long extension. Maybe my idea was wrong. But I think before we start really changing what's happening in Bolinas, which most people rightly so, consider an evacuation route, then we need to have a community conversation before we start making wholesale changes. But I do appreciate both your comments are very well spoken.
Stephanie, you go ahead and then I definitely have something to say.
Yeah, I mean, I have mixed, I guess, feelings or thoughts on this based on conversations I've had with residents and small businesses. And I I appreciate Renee, your vision and your enthusiasm. And I think the mono lot has been good in so many ways. I I don't see it full during the day, during the weekdays, and I'm downtown every day. So it's full a lot of the time on weekends, but I don't see it full during the weekdays. During the day.
Not my experience, but I'm sorry to interrupt.
Okay. And I'm not comfortable with blanket approvals and extending blanket right now when we have a real concern from the urban garden. And I don't know that we've provided enough guidance and specifications on what these need to look like. And, you know, I don't, I shouldn't think that we would need to tell people to talk to their neighbors. But, you know, the retailers have had a revenue impact and we've focused so much on the restaurants, you know, that I I'm just not, I think we need to be selective in in renewing them for that reason. I mean, how are we gonna, how are we gonna get, how are we gonna make this okay? Is John Bella providing design specifications for these? Is that what that is that what's going to be included in that discussion? Who's going to be on point for that?
You know, John is John is a is a very generous volunteer who has given us his time. So, no, he he wouldn't be hired as a designer or providing specs.
So is that our planning department then or?
Garrett, can you can you jump in here? Because I do think it does come down to to this because and this is happening everywhere. We're not alone here. If you look at the way.
I know, Renee, but I'm just saying like, I don't want to extend it. I want to extend it for the health of the economy. And I think by and large, most, the majority of folks are enjoying it, but I just, I just want to be fair to those that are suffering revenue loss.
I hear you.
So I I need to correct some things that that were stated regarding the TPs. TPs allow businesses to use the parking spaces along their frontage. For those businesses like Live Water and Omeley, they spoke to Live Water, as Ms. Govins pointed out, in order to extend in front of their space. Obviously, nobody thought it would be there a year later. So I get her concern. Now, we did ask Omeley to go talk to Live Water about the issue of the store. And they've worked it out. Whether that the approached or where they were talking about it before we asked them to do it, who knows, but they've worked it out. In terms of Village Sake, which is the next one, it's it extends to Sosoni B in his frontage. It extends over the issue, but I get it. We never thought about the visibility of the store. So we'll go back and talk to Village Sake about working with the neighbors, see what can be done to address that. Because the initial the initial thing when we built these, nobody had any covers, so it really wasn't the issue. And when weather came, then it was a cover. And then in Village Sake's side, it's really sunny. It gets really hot. So but we'll work, we can work those issues out. Other than those two, we haven't really received complaints from the others, but the others are in Broadway and in Taylor. So those are completely different situations where what's adjacent to them. And so that's the the difference. So I just want to make clear, the GPs are always a frontage. You extend past it, need approval from your neighbor. Stillwater may have gone past it, but he did get approval from his neighbor. Fairfax, he worked something out with Fratellito. So that wasn't the issue. But Village Sake, obviously, we'll have to work that out. In terms of design, we're the same as all the other Marin cities because it's temporary. We extended it so they could put a little more time and money and effort into building the structures. But we don't we don't have any design standards. I don't know if you really want to go there. This is just of a temporary nature. If you look all around everywhere, they're all different. Some are really good, some aren't so good. You go into San Francisco, they're all different too. On Chestnut Street or wherever you go for the outdoor dining. So it's it's, you know, it's not.
But they're all adhering to those basic specs of don't encroach on your, you know, across your neighbor and.
Right. And I don't know if Village Sake is actually extended to their front.
I don't know if they are either, but when you're driving down Bolinas.
And that's a different.
From Town Hall to Broadway, you don't see that retail.
So that's something we didn't really think about in that in that case. So that's something that we're going to try to address. So that's what I'm saying for the Village Sake, but I'm trying to point out the other ones, the backstory between Live Water and Omeley. And then there's not issues with the other ones as far as we know at this moment in time. Like Sake, sure, that's something if we were to get other ones, obviously that'd be an issue. I think the real issue are the coverings. Coverings, you don't have a cover. It's not going to black block the visibility. And the problem is with Bolinas, it's so narrow, it's small. It's not like a wider street. So I get it, but we'll try to address that concern.
Okay.
So, you know, I think one of the things that John will explain is parklets don't have covers. Parklets are public. They are parks in public parking places. These are extensions of these restaurants. And so with they they're not meant to have covers because they're not meant to be restaurants when you use public space unless you've had a process whereby everyone, the businesses especially, centering the businesses, come out retail and restaurant and figure out how we're going to boost this economy by bringing more people and commerce downtown. Walkable, bikeable. And then we need a parking inventory because there is parking. It's just not right in the places that we've always looked for it. So, you know, this is a bigger, and I hear you, Barbara, believe me, I I went through the Town Center Workshop and none of the things that people were worried about us proposing are on the table at all. But we do have a situation where there there is a younger demographic that's moved here who love being downtown and being outside. And I would rather it rained, but because it's not raining, people want to be out together. So anyway, I I I won't go off anymore, but I I do feel very passionately that we have to stretch.
I have a question. Sorry for Garrett. The parking that you and your staff identified when you were building, when you had the parcade closed, could could we look at that? Because there was just alternate sources of parking, right, during that time?
We did approach the private businesses. The the issue was there were restrictions. Most of the time, you know, they didn't want people to park during the weekend. It was just on the weekday. Actually, some cases, some people parked, other cases they didn't. I I don't know if that's going to accomplish what what really the concern, especially if they don't want people, allow people to park during on weekends. Because because they're also opened up. I think that's an issue. Plus, or I don't know if we're talking more than three months or what what we're talking. I don't know if that's worth that effort. And I don't think it's going to provide a lot of benefit. But, I mean, if you want me to.
Well, I think if
Wish I can.
If we can ask some of the same businesses, that would be good. I know that was a real hassle and we had to do it because we lost 72 spaces or whatever that is in the parcade for a couple of months. And just one more comment before I stop talking. Yes, there is a young demographic, but there's also many folks who have lived here many, many years. And we represent all those folks. So I get the enthusiasm, but we also have to think about folks who may not be as amenable. And also there are folks who may not want to be outside in the future. I don't know that I'll ever go inside again myself, but I may be unique. So I think we have to think about all of Fairfax, not just the folks that we see downtown right now.
Yes, and please forgive, but that was very ageist of me to say it that way because it is a very mixed age demographic that's enjoying the downtown. And yes, I hear. Point well taken, Barbara, that we represent everyone.
And sorry, Bruce, I know you.
Remember, I'd like to speak, but please.
Well, I just wanted to know if, because Barbara suggested no more issuance. And I I know that Iron Springs has been considering it for some time. So have they been issued a permit?
Iron Springs has one.
Okay.
They don't, they just use that as kind of their overflow. I would say right now I'm only aware of one other business that might be interested in applying for a TE.
Okay.
Okay, so there is one. Well, I'll I'll speak for a bit here. I was going to say that I agree with the concept of no more TPs at this point because we think we're coming to the end of COVID. But what you just said may change that. If there's a business that's actually about to apply for one, then maybe that would be kind of unkind to them to say no more TPs. But the rationale for that would seem to me to be that on the one hand, we are, we think that we're coming to the end of this sort of temporary thing. But on the other hand, I I do agree with what several council members have said about wanting to make the extension long enough that we have time to think this through. Because that's what, as I tried to summarize your staff report, we are looking at extending the TPs because we need the businesses that have them need some certainty that they are going to be able to continue doing what they're doing, that they that they are going to be able to continue doing what they're doing, that they don't have to take, tear them down. But at the same time, we need some time to think about where this is. We, we've learned some things. We've, I think we've learned some good things. I think this is one of the silver linings of COVID, to use a silly term. That, that we've learned here. We've tried something, we've explored something, and we've found that, wow, there's some neat things about it. There's also some things we have to think about. We have to work out the details. We have to figure it out. But hmm, there's something here. It actually turns out to be really kind of cool having, you know, some aspects of having this downtown like this. And so I'd like to, and I agree with my fellow council members, I would like to give us time to think this through and to work out the nuances and to try to figure out what we can learn, what we have learned from this period of time. So, um, for that same reason, I don't, I'm not worried about coming up with, and this goes to what Garrett said, I'm not worried about coming up with blanket specifications for what are the rules for how you do dining on the street. You can only have the, the, the cover this high or whatever. You have to have the line of sight this way. We don't need to figure all that out right now because they're temporary. What we will figure out going forward, a lot more nuance about how the downtown might look. And, and we'll, we'll have to figure that out. But for right now, we don't have to solve all the problems of how we're doing with these wood frame structures that we've got out there now, because they're temporary structures. And the businesses in particular, the, the, uh, the business that, um, is being the, um, I'm sorry, it's getting too late. The business is being shaded by. Yeah, Urban Garden, uh, that, that needs to be worked out, but that I think can be worked out on a case by case basis. And I would be happy to see anybody here or staff help them work that out or whatever. But yeah, I think that's a real issue, but we don't need to figure out the general case of how to solve that issue. Anyway, there are a lot of opportunities that, that we've, um, that, and I think Renee spoke very eloquently to it. Um, and I agree with what Chance said, that we have an opportunity to gather some data after we're done with these tiers and we can preserve some sort of normalcy as far as who can go into buildings and how many people can be in, in restaurants and retail spaces. It would be nice to have these continue going for a little while so we can gather some, some information about what things look like then. I think that it's, I think this is really exciting that we are discovering that people really like being together even during COVID. Because frankly, I, I'll just share with you that one of the things I've been the most afraid of with the whole COVID thing has been that COVID might leave us with yet one more reason to be afraid of each other, which is kind of the American disease. I mean, you go to a lot of other countries and people, there's much more common space. And in the United States, people tend to be much more private. And I was just really afraid that with COVID, we would just get that much more privated, that much more afraid of taking public transportation or that much more afraid of being on the street and hanging out together. And I just thought that was the saddest thing potentially about COVID. And so it just thrills me to see that, at least here in Fairfax, that we're not seeing that. We're actually seeing that even during COVID, even while we're still dealing with it. People really want to be with each other and that, that makes me happy. So I'd like to promote that. So enough on that. I just really have to say something. Since Barbara brought up the Bolinas Road thing. I really was intending to never talk about this again. But you brought it up and I just have to answer that. First of all, it makes me see red. This, I think this is the first time I've ever been on a council meeting when I've felt angry. But right now I actually feel angry. And the reason is because it angers me every time I hear it. That concept, which was, came out of what was one of the most beautiful experiences I've had in Fairfax. Of those town workshops that came up with an idea. And then that idea got turned into a different idea. And then that different idea ended up just causing the entire community to go absolutely ape ship. It was a misunderstanding of the whole concept. The concept was that we could open L C N Bank and there would be another route for traffic to go through. You don't have to worry about not having enough escape routes because this would be another escape route that would be much faster than the old escape route. And so that's not the problem. The concept would be, would, would be to open up LC Bank and therefore that would take traffic off of Dominga, which was one of the problems we identified, that there was traffic on Dominga and people were cutting through there because Bolinas Road was narrow and too slow. So people were cutting through Dominga. So why don't we open up this other thing? So then it ends up turning, and then unfortunately, and I'm sorry, I'll take responsibility for this, along with other people, but I will take full responsibility for this. That in the element that was written in the town center element that just described this vision, and this was what we were asked to do by town council, was to come up with a vision. So in describing that vision, part of the description of that vision was that if LC and Bank were opened up and traffic could flow smoothly through that way, and it was much easier to get out of town because you didn't have to turn and turn and turn again, you could go straight through there. If that happened, then all these nice things might happen, like less traffic on Dominga and so forth. And one of the nice things that might happen is, oh, maybe we might want to do something interesting on Bolinas Road. Because we have this whole other route to get out. I mean, I'm sorry, we even mentioned it. We shouldn't have even gone that far. That would have been for a future generation to think about what to do with Bolinas. Or the first thing was to open up LC Bank. That never happened. But this idea of closing Bolinas Road was latched on to like, oh, this bunch of fools decided that the first thing we should do is close the only street out of town. Like everybody's.
Never want to talk about it again. Let's not talk about it anymore. Please, I beg you, I beg you. Let's talk about.
Come back and relate to what we're talking about tonight. Let me just say that it really helps when people actually see something. As opposed to talking about it, imagining it, misunderstanding it, arguing about it on Nextdoor. To actually see it, and that's what happened with COVID. That's the, that's the gift that we've been given is that we got a chance to try something new and creative because we had to. And now we're looking at it and saying, wow, that's kind of interesting. You know, it's kind of nice to sit in front of each of these different businesses. And so let's think about how we might do that. So I'm in favor of trying to think about that. And I think one of the lessons to be learned from this whole thing, all, all the way back to the thing we're not ever going to talk about again, is that it's really helpful if people get a chance to see something and actually demonstrating something and trying it out is, is speaks so much more than words.
So.
Stephanie.
One, one additional thought on to something you shared. I, I love the innovation and the creativity too, and I'm, I'm on board, but I also think that we're, um, it's not in people's mindset that this is temporary. I mean, we can't, the, the business owners who have built these, they're not going to sink another twenty grand into changing them. Like they may, we may think they're temporary, but if we take the time to change specifications, it's not like we can impose on them to build a different structure. So they are thinking about these long-term. And so I, I just, I, I think it's erroneous to be referring, I mean, we're talking tonight about extending them, but you know, to a, to a large extent, the investment was made for the long-term. They wouldn't have done, they wouldn't have done it if they thought it was only going to be, you know, sixty days, ninety days. Cause they're spending a lot of money. So.
What are you, you're, I'm just trying to understand your point. You're saying that you're in favor of.
Well, you're, we're saying like, we're saying, let's take some time, let's survey. But the truth of the matter is they're, they're built. And we may or may not issue more of them. But they're, you know, most of them are already built. And so I don't know that they're, it's those business owners consider them temporary.
You're saying then that therefore you're in favor of an extension of the T E P deadline, right?
I am in favor of it, but when you were saying, you know, let's take some time and we'll think about what changes we want to make, like, you know, I don't think that's realistic, that we're going to be able to go back to the business owners and say, we've, we've captured community feedback and here's how we want them to look now, you know? I mean, they've sunk in a lot of money. So, and that's why, you know, I just.
Well, I think I would add that when we started this, we made this clear that this was temporary. And I think a lot of businesses did sink a lot of money into it because uh, some of them contemplated the idea that once they're, it will never go away. But some of them also did it because they were looking of not being able to serve people at all without them.
Right.
And here's my suggestion is I would, I would make a motion to take staff suggestion to continue the extension through September seventh. But I also think I would add to that, that I think we need to start really looking at this seriously of, like I suggested, a case by case, either going to the planning commission or we appoint a council subcommittee to start thinking of the real details of these kinds of things. And it may be that some of them that, we only approved them as temporary and, and people were clear with that. Although there are some that have bombarded us with emails and kind of campaigns to keep them permanent. Um, is that we come up with kind of a streamlined approach, but we do go into the idea in the future of real specifications, and some of those things will have to change and some of them may have to go away. But I do think, um, I'm backing off of my idea of the end of July and just saying, why not go through this extension through September seventh? But then maybe at a subsequent meeting, appoint a council subcommittee to work on a more permanent approach and a streamlined approach that we can start evaluating these things on a more permanent basis. But I also want to echo what I said earlier, which is I think we need to have a larger community conversation about this. Because there are going to be folks that we're not hearing from now, may not be supportive. And as more people get vaccinated and more people decide they want to go indoors, that may change things. But I do believe, Mary, what you said is there's kind of, there has been a little bit of a gift. Is some folks who were adamant against some of these sorts of ideas really changed their mind and came to me and said, one of, a couple of the business owners who were really against this says, we like this. And, and it may not be that they like it forever, but I would like to make a motion that we allow the staff extension to September seventh. We do those surveys. And then at a subsequent meeting, we appoint the council subcommittee to work on, um, a more thorough approach, which may include specifications. There may be ADA issues and those kinds of things. So I'm just going to put that motion forward.
Before you, oh, Garrett, go ahead, but I, I needed to ask and put something out there before you make a motion.
Okay.
But Garrett, what did you want to say?
I think my suggestion would be not to appoint a council subcommittee, but to let us work with the planning commission and maybe form a subcommittee on that end for how they should do it from a design perspective. If indeed you're thinking you might.
Great idea.
If this becomes more permanent, so to speak, but we're not even there yet. So I don't even want to broach that issue, but that's just a suggestion.
That's a better suggestion than mine. And I would also tell you, I was on a planning commission subcommittee at one point that worked on Parklets way back in the day. So, and I still have those notes, I believe.
I actually have the staff report and the approval for the temporary, the one that Jim Moore came up with.
No, it was not Jim Moore. It was me, Jim Moore, the guy who owned one, two, three Bolinas and Morgan.
Okay. I thought it was before one, two, three Berlin. Anyway, let's not argue about that. I do have the staff report.
Okay. Well, anyway, um, I guess I want to make that motion, but you wanted to say something.
Well, there's just a few other things that I, I, you know, there are a lot of people like John Bella and, um, the folks that have really put a lot of time into looking at the downtown and working with a lot of the businesses, including myself. Um, and there's talk about the mono lot. And if we're going to just push this down for three months of extension, there are musicians all over this town that are, that are begging to play music. Um, San and Selmo and their Creek Park has had music every single weekend. Um, for maybe even during the week, for months and months and months. Um, I would like to request that we do something to actually allow this mono lot space to become more beautified and to have someone who puts together a schedule of musicians to play. I understand we have a amplification issue, but we could absolutely do acoustic, acoustic sound in there. Um, there's just, you know, if we just throw this out there as a three-month extension, while we do surveys and things, we haven't done anything to make it better in the interim, and it's summertime. So these businesses are counting on a lot of life down there.
So why don't I make the motion to extend through September, September seventh with the additional requirement that we allow non-amplified music and allow someone to take over the scheduling in the mono lot. That would also make it more vibrant.
Okay. Was there anything else that we wanted to add to that to make that amendment even more, I mean, to make a friendly amendment or add anything? It's, we don't get to do this very often. Is that it? Is that all we need to do?
You mean add anything to mono lot?
Yeah, just to, just to the discussion, because this was all about public space and it wasn't, it, we haven't really. Is this what?
I don't know whether we need to add it to the motion, but I think what we've been talking about is, as we said after the staff report, that we'll extend this temporary, but we'll also use this opportunity to do some serious thinking as a town about where we might go from here. So I don't think that needs to be part of the motion, but I think that's what we're all talking about.
Okay, um, I would like to request then, I don't know, with council approval, or you may all just want to nix this, is that I am able to continue my work with John Bella as the chamber is really, they, they don't have the human power to put something together in order to invite all of the businesses and encourage all of the businesses to this conversation. Because we can't go anywhere further without that. That, and then the whole community engagement is another piece. But can I be, can I have the blessing of the council to continue on that work and play that role? Because, um, our council, I mean, our chamber E D is not able to be the one man show that, um, that, that, you know.
I think as, as the chamber liaison, you already have that authority.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
They need anything special. So the motion is extension through September seventh with the addition of only non-amplified music in the mono lot. And the town is not taking on the scheduling. You as the chamber liaison can find somebody to do that, but non-amplified music. Somebody want to second that? Or is everybody going to sit there?
One being asked to do something.
Can I ask a question? Sorry to clarify on that.
Yeah, let's, let's keep.
Okay. So, so right now people just show up and play. And we've told Stoll House, no, it's not sponsored. People just happen to bring their guitar. What we're talking about now is someone could actually schedule someone to play acoustic only in the mono lot, assuming they can meet whatever public health orders are in place at that time.
Okay. Yes. Friendly amendment taken. Does somebody want to second this? Yes, friendly amendment taken. Does somebody want to second this?
Well, if no one else is going to add anything and you've heard enough out of me, I'll second that motion.
Yay.
What I was waiting for.
Well, I just want to make sure from Garrett too, that, that Garrett is, or staff is going to address. The, the issues that have, that have come up with the. Yeah, and, and also you, Garrett, you said you were gonna. Talk to the planning commission as well about, is that all?
I think that was a future item.
I see, okay.
Yeah, the planning commission feature on the Village Saki, that's within my authority under the TPs right now. So that's, that's on the list to do.
Just wanted to confirm. Thanks.
Yeah, okay.
So can we have a roll call, Mayor?
Okay, let's do that. I'll just go ahead and take it. All right. So let's start with Chance.
Yes.
All right, Renee.
Yes.
Barbara.
Yes.
Well, you made the motion.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. All right. That was a good creative discussion and I'm just happy that we can continue to be creative about this. This is fun. Who imagined that COVID would be fun, but here's something coming out of it. Yay. All right. So that was our last major agenda item. And. Yeah. We are at that point of adjournment.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes. Good night.
Bye.